So celebrations.
So celebrations, I have three. I am going to start by having the star show, please talk about Olivia Moore and her honor that you may have seen on video.
Yeah, so Olivia went and competed at educator riding in April, and she earned an opportunity to compete down in Orlando. She took first place, which is the first time, I believe, since she has competed in educator riding. And she had last, I saw her at the Fourth of July celebration down there, we just had a low cap conversation, but she had a really good time down there in Orlando. And when she was here, before she got to Orlando, she scored a ninety-three percent at the state, which qualified her for national. So then down there, she had, she competed in job interview categories, and more specifically, it was her professional position. And so she did the mock interview, everything went really well, it was a six-day trip. And in order to do this trip, she like worked concession stands and fundraised the whole trip for herself to go. Her models were chaperones, yeah, they had a blast, if you see the public pictures on the backside, they're pretty neat, pretty neat opportunities.
She has to collaborate with other with the council students when she was coming back.
Twenty other students from across the state were all competing down there, so that was cool. And then, let me read this right, there's thirty-five hundred students competitors down in Orlando.
Thank you. So I would also like to celebrate the boys' baseball team and coaching staff for their trip to the state tournament. That was last month, obviously, a very, very proud moment for the community, for them to compete. And it didn't work out, only one team can, as I thought the team that beat them did eventually win the state championship, Johnson Creek. But I wanted to do a celebration shout-out to the baseball team and the coaches for their successful season and trip to the state tournament. And then finally, we have three students, and this was just hot off the presses about ten days ago, that we had three of our students that received, we found out, the families did receive the AbniFol Scholarship through UW. You have to be a basketball player or manager to apply for it, and we had multiple students apply, and Brooke Grossman, Ellen Bowden, and Reece Grimm were all recipients of the scholarship. It's for forty thousand dollars each, take it ten thousand dollars a year for four years through the scholarship. So that was kind of big moves, and I did get permission from the families to share the names of the kids, because I, hopefully to encourage more folk to apply in the future, because any managers or basketball players are able, boys or girls, are able to apply for this scholarship. And to have three folks, I know we have an exceptional group that just graduated, but that's pretty impressive, and that's a game changer, because you have ten thousand dollars a year for four years. So congratulations to those three. Those are my celebrations. Yesterday, I had to wait till after this here, that was the deal.
And Olivia also? It should have been Monday.
That was it, that Monday.
Yeah.
Thursday will be it.
This week, Thursday, okay, got it, yeah.
Yep. So both, you will find both in the Pittsburgh record. Upcoming. Okay.
Any public comments? Okay, consented gen items, you know, the certification, are you reading that, financials, the hiring, the WIA membership, who wants to do that stuff?
It can be a hard concept, yeah. It's a formality for those, every year we have to renew, our board has to renew the membership at WIA for us to participate.
I'm watching that we approved the consented gen items, that's present, please.
A second.
You have a second, is there any further conversation? If not, take a vote, call it there.
Uh-huh.
The passes, uh, the community members, district administrators.
Florida did send you a email with a copy of the update, social and follow-up on my computer.
I'll go to my email, it's not in there. And I certainly can't see how much you showed me anymore.
Julie.
I'm more.
All good?
Got it.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, wanted to give a hiring update, it's the same as it was last month, and we are still looking for a special education paraprofessional, that position. Has been posted out for almost half a year.
You have two applicants, and please in the record, and...
Yeah, excellent. We've been looking at other avenues, we didn't work out, like we have, you know, we use N D's for certain policies and stuff, but, you know, it's very competitive right now in certain educational job market. So we, we're happy when we get applicants, a lot of times we have to do some vetting, and maybe they're not what we thought, but we go through the process, and then high school math position is probably looking more and more like we're going to be proceeding with an overload here if we don't get. So moving on that. So, and so those are the only two openings that we have as of this moment right now for, for physicians. And obviously, knowing the valuable positions we have with the retirement issue and stuff, I would say we're pretty happy that this is minimal right now going in. I'm not going to say it doesn't have an impact, because obviously the parents are missing full support and kids, but in all things considered, and talking to other district administrators right now, with the struggle of filling vacant positions, and there's local districts that are going in with like multiple unfilled teaching positions, to where they're having to drop classes if they can't fill these, so it's a challenge.
Just a question, two, two questions, on the paraprofessional position, I know it's a vacant position, but last year we approved another position, because you have to transport the project church person each day, and so that's why we approved another position last year, and so we don't have that this coming year, so do we have more students?
That was a piece of it, was the transport, was a piece of it, like certainly part of all, let Danny talk to it.
That was the open enrollment team, so we had an additional two weeks that we had hired for to support that need, not just the...
With the sibling, the student had siblings that came in, so that project church was a piece of it, because obviously the body...
So my question with that is, I know typically, I know typically decisions, like typically a whole-time position is more attractive than a part-time position, but, well, it's not, because no one's applying, but I just wondered if maybe we take a staff at posting a part-time position, and just see if there's someone out there that maybe only wants to work four hours a day, or something like that, and could we make it work, since maybe we don't have a piece of what that position was this last year?
To be completely transparent with you, Danny can expound in this, we have had applicants, and our base wage, it is not competitive enough with other local districts.
Potentially someone in the part-time market, maybe wages is a bigger deal, because maybe they're retired, or they're, I don't know, and it might not work. And typically, that is not the strategy, but because, well, the strategy is maybe trying to hire someone who's full-time, isn't working, just wanted to throw it out. That maybe being, like posting at part-time or full-time, and seeing if we can find someone even half-day.
I think what, and that certainly is an option, I think what Danny is looking at right now is, is looking at our existing staff, including special educators, to link them into the support where we can, which unfortunately means sometimes you have to teeter what support looks like for students, but yes. So there are all options, they're still on the table, but, because right now we have had, how many folks have we got to do?
Home conversations included?
Well, I'm talking, we, we have offered, Danny's offered the position.
I have offered, who declined?
And they declined because of the, okay, so yeah, but we'll keep all options on the table.
How many do you plan to do that thing?
Three, so.
That was with two very interested, all the phone conversations that passed before they come in, and...
Just couldn't make up those, we're keeping them benefits.
We have here, and we take that they can, they can work. And then most recently, I knew, and she had to respectfully decline as well.
The struggle would be for those hourly positions, Chris, is if they don't live right near Pittsville, when you're making that, you know, if you have to drive from, that's the struggle right now. So it's not like we're way out of whack with other districts, but if it's someone who lives in Marshville, and they're making, they'd be making two dollars an hour more, and Marshall can't have to drive there, that's the struggle. But yeah, we'll, we'll keep everything on the table with that, Danny's, trying to...
Even if you do the verbage, you're a part-time or full-time, if that opens the pool, what options do you have to perform?
Yeah, because we certainly...
Especially if you're thinking about filling in with some people, even if you could get a morning or an afternoon, that could be a big deal, right? I mean, at least... Four hours compared to the normal, additional support.
For sure. Okay, next slide, so, as I indicated, we did a staff, student, and family, three separate surveys that went out to, to all families, went out to students. Leslie, if you remind me, what grade did we decide to put them to, from the students that went out?
Third grade.
Third grade, third grade and above, the students also filled it out, and then all staff, all employee groups, were asked to fill out the survey, it was anonymous, we did not collect email addresses, because we wanted people to be candid with this. So we have the data, and are sorting the data, example you see here is what Taylor put together, was a bar graph, kind of showing the results. So at next month's meeting, and I will share this with the board later this week, so you have some time to go through the data before the board meeting next month, but we will go through and share the data for all three of those surveys with the school board, because this is being used to for some of our administrative goals for next school year, as far as some of the information we gleaned, I would tell you, in general, looking at the data, we're very pleased with the results as far as what we've received for feedback. There is that, probably that showed that we could, maybe have some real factors, we know that we want to keep improving that, but in general, it was on a, it was a rate, zero to five on the ratings. So anything, you know, you get up in the four, you know, that range and stuff, three and a half to four is something where we'd say we're, we're doing a pretty good job. So this is actually one sample slide, this is actually pulled from the survey, so this would be from the family survey, the question was, the, about, do you value the uniqueness of my student, so my, of my child, so for the, from the family perspective, so you can see is, the results in the middle there would have been like threes, fours, and fives, the number, and as you can see overwhelmingly, we saw straight fours and fives. So that's what we kind of look for, we want to take threes and above, obviously fours and fives are better, but the, the, the team has gone through that data, we'll go through it a little more in depth, and then we'll present that to the board next month. I just wanted to give you a little sneak peek, but that will be shared with you guys later.
Will you explain when you send it out, like, I don't actually understand what it says, so...
So we are...
Anyway, you cleaned up.
Okay, you need to clean up, you're a two-month...
Okay, I want to figure out how to work it, tell them.
I, Julie, I'm old, Julie, I'm old and everyone, I need youngsters to do the stuff. So I want to try and throw Taylor, Danny under the box, and lastly, I don't confuse youngsters like you, right? So we're working the case, trying to get it so easily, so this was just kind of, this will give you a good view of that's what we're looking at, but we're going to make it pretty...
Or just, or just give us a key, or just give us a key, so...
So you'll actually see scores, we'll have aggregate scores, like it'll say like this, this is a four point one two out of five for each of the areas, and stuff that'll be...
Not a problem, or, or just a key.
Yeah, okay. Now, really fun stuff, buy-in budget. So, Pam, I can see Pam almost came out of her chair, was excited when I talked about buy-in budget right there. So I'll start with the good news, so the good news is, they got the budget done in July, which is almost unheard of, normally it's October. That's the good news, because then we at least know, right, where there's some knowns now, that we know for the next two years that this is where the dollar's at. There were some disappointing pieces, as there always says, anytime you have a budget, you can have everything you want. I'm going to do a brief overview with the board, I, I shared with the committee on the board the synopsis they gave last week, and there are still, like, this budget is huge, right? This is a lot, there's a lot of detail, there are still organizations breaking it down, but this is kind of a, the pieces I picked up, say, what's going to impact us here in Pittsville? And these would be areas that I would say would be the ones that would probably have the most meaning or impact to us as of right now. So I'll start with, I started with the, probably the two most disappointing pieces, is the low revenue ceiling remains at eleven thousand dollars. We were really holding on hope that they would raise the revenue ceiling, there was talk, all the way up until a week before the budget was finalized, that they were going to look at twelve thousand, six fifty becoming the low number. The reason that, we're one of those low revenue ceiling districts, right, there are some that are higher, like Gibraltar is at twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars per student, that's the highest in the state. The goal from the joint finance committee was to try to bring everybody within ten percent, so the top and the bottom being within ten percent. If you take like a Gibraltar and throw them out in that situation, because they're such an extreme outlier, that didn't happen. That per pupil adjustment, that three twenty-five, that, that's kind of, that was a known, we knew going in that we would get that adjustment. Now, why does that matter with the low revenue ceiling, and the other piece was, there was no increase in shared aid. That was probably the biggest piece, because even if they had raised the low ceiling, and how they gave us three twenty-five without increasing the shared revenue, the aid, the property taxes go up. When they increased the shared revenue, more money goes to schools and property taxes, state and federal now. So that was why, you know, being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers, it wasn't like we were just holding on hope saying we need more money, which we do, but we were also hoping for that, that shared revenue to go up out of that five point eight billion dollar surplus, it didn't happen. They did increase special education funding, so that meant, for the first part of the, the first year of vitamin, it went up to forty-two percent from thirty-two, it was thirty-two point five, I believe, this currently. It went up to forty-two, and it'll go up to forty-five next year, if it's actually carried by any budget, so that was an increase. That won't have as big of an impact as raising that low revenue ceiling and increasing the shared revenue, it won't, it's not even close, to be frank. Hypothetically speaking, and Pam, I hope I can share this, it would be approximately, this is ray rock numbers, about fifty-eight to sixty-two thousand dollars for us, is what that meant now, in the district. Now, that's certainly better than the sick again, but that's what it means for the special education funding.
Almost anything is better. Thanks for that visual. So, the real question here, you know what I'm going to ask, right, how does this align with what you presented to us?
Now, I did, the three twenty-five I had in there, um, low revenue, eleven thousand was there, special education aid, I had it thirty-three percent, because that was the math thing.
So this is only doing better than the scenario of...
So far, yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I knew, I knew, I was trying to say, was it just the budget? I was going to say, what was the budget?
I thought about, I thought, I refrained from the...
Yeah.
Right there, Jason.
My, my question, so did the, so the per pupil adjustment increase?
No, that was what was...
That stayed the same?
It stayed the same.
So, so based on this preliminary budget that we had had on, on last month, how, how are we...
It's exactly what she put in.
It is what we have.
Actually, I'm not, now, how the question comes in, we were kind of hoping for an increase, so that we can, you know, kind of justify this math position, right?
Well, for, for mo, honestly, we were hoping for an increase to lower, what we would have to levy, lower taxes. Like, that's what we were hoping for, because it was a preliminary budget, Chris, like, it wasn't about hoping for an increase for the math, because everything was so preliminary, like, I know, now we have some knowns, but to the point, Julie just asked, like, we didn't budget, because we didn't know anything about the special ed increase, so that's a clock that we didn't know about. Fifty-eight to sixty-two thousand dollars more, I'm going to talk later about the increase for open and rolled in, which is a big thing for us, because we have a lot of kids open and rolled in, Natalie, I'm serious, those were all, Pam was very conservative in her budget, and so we, but I'll get through, but I know exactly what you're saying, but yes. Any increases we saw in here, we were very conservative, so any increases are good for us, looking at the budget when it comes, comes to that time here.
So, the high-end office, social, education, are, the stuff that was withheld in July, if it's withheld, does that impact us at all, or will we not part of that money?
Yeah, it will affect us, definitely.
Our after-school program right now is...
The D C I has the website out right now, we're going to be affected, we're going to lose about a hundred and two thousand.
Yeah.
Like a hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars, is what we're going to...
The after-school program?
Is in there, yeah, the school program is eighty thousand dollars.
We have grants for four hundred thousand dollars, that money is frozen right now, so...
Let me understand.
It's not part of our general budget, and nothing is not, it, it's part of the eight thousand dollars a year for five years through a federal grant that we apply for.
But in our budget, that would be a wash, because there's eighty revenue, eighty expense, so...
And the hundred and five, you just said out loud, the eighty is part of that.
Yes, the eighty is part of that, so the difference is what we're going to lose, entitled money, right now.
Which would be part of those things that we...
Right, which help fund...
Which helps. That's a good question, huh, yeah, so right now, I, I mean, Andy, I mean, everybody that knows me, knows I'm a pessimist guy, just a happy, lucky guy all the time. I'm holding out hope that that federal grant money is still going to be released, because it was, it was appropriated, and it was, the president signed it in, in March, releasing that money. I just shared with the board, and the committee staff turned it out off the presses, that Wisconsin joined a multi-state lawsuit for that money for this fiscal year, saying that it was already appropriated, it's been distributed to the state, so they'd have to claw it back to begin with, I don't know what that's going to mean if they do a state, still, the money won't be released until it's determined, so who knows what's going to happen? I'm still holding out hope that at least, for Wisconsin, that, that after-school program money is going to get released, that the Twenty-First Century Learning Program is specifically one of the five things they listed, that the money's being held back for, my hope is that that money will still be released, because they, they listed five sections of money, that was one. There's nothing that says they can't release portions of that, I hope they release all of it for the good of kids everywhere that need it, but in particular, the big one that's going to affect us is that after-school program, it will not impact our general budget, but it will impact a hundred and eight students that utilize that program.
Yeah, so we can either talk about it now, because we're kind of on it, or we can wait to talk about it much later, but I think that we, as a board, need to send a letter to Tiffany, Johnson, Bowden, and give specific details on the impact it's having on our school, the number of kids it will impact and families, and the fact that if we don't have the money, we won't have the program. I mean, that, that's just the answer, right, there's, there's no way we can find that money somewhere else, and this is the impact it will have, and they need to hear from us. Because it's, it's a drastic, there's a lot of families that are using that in a district that, you know, has a lot of socioeconomic impact, and I, I think we need to send them...
So they wouldn't know, and Julie agrees, in wholeheartedly, we hosted, Pittsville hosted a roundtable two weeks ago, Mary Ann was there as the Pittsburgh record. I was there, Ron Klein, and we actually had a fa, a parent of a family that's in the program, so this was set up by the state, and actually Representative Baldwin's representative showed up, and was, because all the legislators were invited to it.
Yeah, but we don't have to convince Jennifer Baldwin, we have to convince Jonathan and Tiffany, and so if they didn't come, then we need it.
They didn't come, I guess what I was, what I want to say is, like, well, we drafted the stories, we told, we have that parent.
Yeah.
I agree, and what we can do is share that out, and then cite something as a board, I think would be a great one, because the parents that spoke, for our parents that spoke, I wish we could have recorded it, actually Channel Seven News was here, and, and, where, they ran an article, our news portion about it. He was very eloquent in that, he indicated, he, he is not one of those families that's challenged socio-economically, but what it allows him to do, is he, him and his wife to both work until five o'clock, full-time, because their children have a place to be afterward, but I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, because this, this is going to have a big impact on our families and our community.
How long, how long we have funds to develop?
We're not even, we were supposed to get it for three more years.
Yeah, we're supposed to have eighty thousand for five years.
So what, so how much the money, if we come in in July, what's going to...
Well, eighty thousand dollars for the twenty-five...
Maybe we don't have money for it.
We, there is no money, we don't have it because of...
Right, unless they, unless they reallocate it to, if we don't have an after-school...
Then we're good for the year.
September first.
Then we're good for the year, you know, if we don't know something by September first, and Ron Klein, we've been meeting and talking about this, like, there's options, I would just be frank with you, and, and you're right, Julie, this can cover the legislative update piece, right, so that we're not being redundant, the options would be charging a fee to families, which, when you're talking about a good portion of your families that fit, are those S T S families, what's palpable, what will run the program? We did find out that the AmeriCorps positions we applied for, we applied for three half-time AmeriCorps positions through the Marshfield Clinic, those are back on the table, we were told those are back. And the reason we applied for those was to help with this program, because one of the biggest costs is staffing, so that would help if we were able to get that staffing. But what we've talked about doing is maybe having the pair back, like, it's fantastic right now, we do enrichment, we do all these different things that go on, you know, that we feed up. We may have to do a pair back version of it, and what that might mean is, if you don't hear anything by September, if we want to do a pair back version, and then if we find out access money's into them, we can go pull, pull more with it, but what you're going to find out is, a lot of these families need to find out, if this isn't going to be here, I need to find childcare for my kid, my kids now, and they may be locked in and stuff, that's why this is very unfortunate, the timing of all of it about, about. We knew going in, to, the frank truth is, we knew it was very unlikely it was going to be back next year, that's what we were told, is, is listen, for twenty-six, twenty-seven, don't plan out it. But everybody had told us for a month, twenty-five, twenty-six, it's safe to say that money's going to be there, because it's been appropriated already, right? And then it was, two weeks ago, the rumor just pulled out from underneath us on that, now it's gone for this year, no one was really planning for it being gone for this year, that's the scramble. Like, if we had a year to say, listen, we're going to try to figure out what this might look like, it's just knowing that it's like, you got two months, and then this family's grateful, we still want to know. The families keep emailing us saying, what are you doing, and we're kind of like, hey, we get it, but we just found out two weeks ago, and we're trying to find out options, but they want to plan ahead to see what they're going to have to do with their kids. So it's, it's very unfortunate right now, because it, it is going to have a huge impact for us, so. I wish I had better news on that, but I, I guess the only thing would be, I'm optimistic, something's would happen, so.
It needs to happen soon.
Well, is there an opportunity for us to, I, I understand that there's families that can't afford it, so I get that, but we do have an alternative of after-school care.
Correct, we talked about it.
So we do have, you know, have a licensed childcare that we can offer after-school care.
Exactly.
That at least we can assure families, the unknown is whether or not this can be covered as a program we can offer to you, or this is the fee that it would cost you for your child to come. I think we could be in a position that we could, we could at least give that information, so what we don't know is if we're going to have to charge you or not. And I understand that if we have to charge you, you know, there are families that can't afford this, but at least it would be some knowns.
Yeah, that's what Ron's been more or less telling them, is that obviously the childcare center would potentially be an option, but we are going to make, if it doesn't run, we're going to have to charge some kind of fee now. And once again, they want to know, well, how much, and we just, we just don't know that yet, but it would be a fee, and we would try to keep it where it's palpable for families and stuff, so, yeah. So I know people want answers, and we, we want to give them answers, but right now, I guess maybe we're holding out hope that maybe this would be stuff where they would kind of just say, don't, you know what, we're going to release the funds, and we're going to go back to what we said for next year, and we were waiting a couple weeks to see if that would happen.
Because it's awesome that the AmeriCorps positions are back on the table, but unless someone in this district knows someone, it's just over about the hardest positions that exist to recruit for.
Yeah.
You almost have to know someone to like help them get into that role to do it, just putting it out there, it's, it's almost impossible to find someone. So it's great that, that they're back on the table and it's funded for us, but they're just so hard.
We were approved, when I came here three years ago, we had been approved for two positions, begging to apply for two, and we posted and interviewed, and we got no one for multiple years. I guess the only hope would be would it be a half-time, maybe you'd get someone who's a college student who's got half a day that couldn't work full-time or something, but yeah, Julie, you're right, I, I'm not like my age with that basket. But at least it's something where we felt like, hey, you know what, if we, if we throw it out there, we might have some people looking for some part-time work, and then it goes back to what I said, it's a four-month career position, for the hourly rate you're going to get, and then you're driving the tire, if you have to drive fifteen miles back and forth, so, well, now I'm depressed.
I'm sure that's almost like a sixty-nine.
I wa, I was, the key word was was optimism, so high cost of special education, sounds great, minimal impact on our district, so that would be, Danny helping, just, any individual students that cost more than thirty thousand dollars to educate?
Right, so there's, you know, much convoluted formula is the thing you have to do, we got about twelve thousand dollars for last year's high cost. And you can't do things like this, you can't even grant money to fund them, so, you know, it's just, and it varies every year, depends what kids have, what services, you know, it's never really an exact...
So it's not, it's not going to hurt us, it could help us a little bit. So it's not, it's not gonna hurt us, it could help us a little bit, um, so look down, uh, go to the next slide. Um, sparsity aid, uh, two million of them by any of the, uh, fully aid that eligibility under the current law. Um, Pam, you wanna talk about sparsity aid at all?
I wasn't prepared to, but.
Well, just the general overview as far as what sparsity aid is.
Yeah, so it's based on how many students you have per square mile, and we have like, we have one point six students per square mile, so.
But it's pretty sparse.
Yeah, it's pretty sparse. We usually get that money in November, off the top of my head, I can't remember what we get, and I honestly don't know. If I, if I remembered correctly, it was only funded at like eighty-five percent because they had a certain amount of money, and they just put it among all the school districts. So they're putting more money into it, hopefully it'll be funded at a hundred percent.
The line of money.
We will definitely get something because we're, I mean, we got about the sparsity level.
Um, I put in the pupil transportation aid too because anybody transported twelve miles or more, which, once again, we got, as you did, kind of like, did it on buses for a significant amount of time.
So then how much will we hit them up and then we drive them for twelve miles? I was just kidding.
Camera off. Kind of five minutes. So.
Back, back. Oh, I'm feeling, I'm feeling like we could be at a hundred percent since we're today.
So these, uh, uh, two, two ones that you heard me talk about over the last year is the early literacy fund, so the Act Twenty Fund. If you remember originally, they had advertised that there would be a reimbursement of up to fifty percent of the cost for one of the five approved programs. Uh, then that money was frozen, that has now been released, and is in this budget that they will, when, once again, I caution us, it's up to fifty percent. For us, that would be approximately twenty-five thousand dollars for for our Act Twenty materials that we had to purchase for.
If we get fifty percent.
If we get fifty percent, okay, and these are ballpark numbers, but that that's about what it would end up being. The other thing would be the the diagnostic tool reimbursement, um, piece, that was included in there, that that's a part, and that would be, uh, anything that we use as far as, uh, having to use the diagnostic tool where you determine whether or not the kids are meeting the the requirement set for by Act Twenty. So those were, and included anything that really could move the needle either way for us here. There was nothing in the budget, other than the loss of federal funding, which is not the state budget, that would have moved the needle backwards for us. So there's nothing in there that was like, we're gonna lose money from the state budget side, so I wanna be clear about that, so it's not like I left anything else that's gonna hammer us. Because there really is nothing that left us, left unneeded in the area, and that was because Pam was very conservative with her budget estimates in the beginning here. So everything that we're gonna see is gonna lead to modest gains or gains that that we're looking at. Um, this is the one, I'm, the next one is the one I wanna know more about, um, and that would be the public school open enrollment. So I will just tell you, I was at a WI, that meeting, I'm on that competitive balance committee now, and the superintendent that was sitting next to me is from a small world school district, who has hired an open enrollment student just like us, and he looked at me and said, wow, hey, he said, that's good news about open enrollment, this money, I said, tell me more. And he said, well, you haven't seen the budget, and I said, it's my nighttime reading material, so I said, no, it just came out yesterday. He said the open enrollment in numbers went up the per pupil numbers, and for those of us that have more open enrollment in than we do out, that's good news. So this chart that you're seeing right here is what the proposed increases were for both the first year and the second year of that. So for a student, if you remember, any students that open a roll into the district, we do not get fully funded for them.
So again, if it doesn't change, it's passed away twenty twenty-seven, that we actually will receive more money for someone opening roll in than we do on our own, that actually goes to school here, right, thirty bucks?
Pam?
No, because we have that three twenty-five built in every year, oh, on top of eleven. Right, so we're at eleven, three twenty-five for this twenty-five, twenty-six year, then the three twenty-five.
We'll go on another year.
Okay, and the three twenty-five is not on top of this, this is a. That's totally separate, a totally separate.
So this will catch it up for sure, Julie, but but that three twenty-five will keep that out, uh, outpace it, but this is good news. I, there's no other way to put it, like, this for us is good news because we draw students into the district more than we have older roll out.
What, what are we at right now? How many in versus how many out?
I wanna say we're about thirty to thirty-five, probably positive.
Positive.
If I, if I remember correctly.
I, I think.
Yeah, truly, this truly is.
Thirty-five.
My head here.
That's great.
Thirty-five.
Well, thirty-five, I think we're like eighty-five in, fifty out, they're about, that's great.
Yes, and then, as you can see with the special education open enrollment in as well went up significantly, which is another, you know, there are two things, two, two reasons you can deny open enrollment in requests. Would, one would be special education services, if you can't serve a student, the other one, uh, you can deny base product, like disciplinary type things, there's there's certain parameters you can deny, but the special education piece is one. The board has been very, like, we we've been very open about, we accept, like, students, we accept students if we have the ability to serve students. And then when you couple in, when you have siblings, you know, it's just so complicated that you might have a family that has four students who do not receive services already open enrolled in, and then they wanna open enroll a child who has services, that's a difficult thing for us to to say no to because you potentially lose your opportunity. Anyway, I don't need to get on my soapbox, but these are good numbers, but this, there's no way to not say that these are good numbers that this was. And this, I'll be honest with you, I did not hear a whisper during the whole state budget about this, no one did, no, none of the superintendents I talked to even knew this was on the table for interest in the open enrollment, uh, revenue, so this was a, this was a nice surprise for us. Any, any questions? That's just kinda, we're talking about, I don't know if it was this seven-hundred-page bill, right, the budget was seven hundred pages, this is two, three slides, and a Google slideshow. But these are the ones that right now, now, there could be pieces, and and we have like our state organizations that are going through this right now, a lot, a lot of things going through it, and they're gonna give an update, um, as they go further through this. Are there other nuggets that could be in here that we missed? There could be, there absolutely could be, and eventually, when we get through the audit, then we'll shift to where we can start looking at, okay, what does this mean for for our funding? But all of the stuff you see here i- is going to have a positive net impact for our budget, the stuff that I presented to you today. Yeah, I'm gonna do a decent job, we're giving you just enough to give you a taste here of it, and keep you like a good shoulder in suspense for next week if new comes up. Bad analogy, sorry. Okay, that is my district administrator update and legislative update, so I made the, maybe run my personal.
Okay, school board, uh, what's update?
Well, I more or less, I think what we've done is we've gone through, looking at, uh, like, when we had talked about our, uh, looking at the fund, it's just kinda talked, we have not met since, uh, that previous meeting, that's the last board meeting as part of the fund, which is that's an alternate, uh, funding source. I know childcare, um, we will have an update when we talk about handbook tonight, that committee met last week. And, uh, Tabitha is here to answer the questions about that, kinda talked about that, that portion. So I don't know, is there anything else any board members would like to discuss as far as our board goals? I know, uh, September, we had talked about Mary Ann, uh, potentially in September, the board setting, uh, updating goals for next, for the upcoming year. Could be just modifying the current goals, and we have a conversation about where we're at after a year's progress in, in September, as far as upcoming board meeting. Yeah, unless anybody else has anything they have at the board rules. Okay.
Okay, let's face the word, uh, for that.
So the main thing, um, if you remember, we took a hiatus last year because we, as a district, going into the referendum froze all, uh, conferences, and we felt it's a board district administrator that people must to do the same as staff, and for go going to our professional conference for that year. Uh, we opened that back up to staff this year, so we obviously have it open back up again because there is value in going to a lawsuit. Uh, some of the sessions are very applicable, so what we need to do is, the room registration starts already, it's already open. So Mary Ann asked that I just get a gauge for, uh, those of you who like who plans on attending or not, and I don't know. Jen, did we have a, I can look it up quick, and Nick, can you Google the dates on real quick, it's January, but I don't remember the dates. And you're not signing anything in blood here tonight, we're just asking if there's someone who knows, like, I'm not, I cannot go, we just need to do twenty-second through the twenty-fourth of January. So. Nope, if you, uh, if you want to. Write that down, um, we'll put that in the notes, and if if you could probably get back to, we're we're not, we're not gonna get rooms right now, but we would like to probably consider it soon, so. If maybe by the end of the next week or so, if you could just either say like, yeah, I'm out definitely because I have other plans, or I'm into, uh, going. We can book the rooms, and all the way up to tell the date before you can cancel rooms at no cost, so, so we can book them, and we can always cancel if we need to. Okay?
And do you listen?
Yeah, um, I think we're gonna talk about, um, whether or not, and we'll we'll lump that in when we talk about our, uh, under G for discussion for the, uh.
What is WERSA?
What's that?
What is that?
The Rural Schools Alliance, that we are a member of. Uh, it's honestly, it's a, I I find it a more valuable as far as the advocacy that they do for us, because it is specifically designed for rural schools, as far as the needs, the needs of rural schools. Uh, they have their own state and national convention, uh, that is the one that, you may recall, Tammy Hardiger and I presented at, uh, the state convention, I did one with the superintendent from, uh, uh, Gillett, where we presented on, uh, kinda how our connection to the community is a small school, and then Tammy and I did one on the connection between a public library and a public school system. So, yeah, so anyway, we're gonna talk about both WERSA and WASB have, uh, business awards, community partnerships, and we'll talk about that nonetheless, but, um, I think.
That one is October thirtieth and thirty-first.
Yeah, and Mary Ann and I have gone to that before, so if any board members are interested in attending the WERSA, just, uh, could, could you say that, Julie, one more time?
October thirtieth and thirty-first.
October thirtieth and thirty-first is WERSA, that's usually in Green Bay, let me see what it is again.
Doesn't say, but it's not.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's in Green Bay.
Actually, it's in Stevens Point.
That was close, that was close. Three years in Green Bay, now we're in Stevens Point, so, uh, that's drivable, if if a person was interested in not getting a room. I will tell you right now, um, I've been to WASB, I've been to superintendent association meetings, I've been to this, I find WERSA to be the most applicable as far as protections. Um, and it's, uh, mainly because we are a small world school, and a lot of that stuff really resonates, so if you were able to attend, I would strongly recommend. Uh, we have a WERSA membership, so you are a member for the.
Yeah, from the hundred and twenty-five.
Very reasonable. I'm actually gonna probably put in for a proposal, um, to present again, because those deadlines are coming up, where I would like to present, and actually, I wanna have our our CTE department kinda present on the, our CTE academy. So I'm gonna put in for a proposal for us to present, and I don't know if we'll be accepted or not, but, so. So those are the dates, you don't need to let me know tonight, but it's just something to be on the radar for, if you want to, Mary, Mary Ann and I are plan, planning on going to the WERSA convention, so. Okay?
Uh, any, any, uh, for, Taylor and.
You can say what you want, we don't have anything on board, well, I guess. So we received a grant, um, through Marathon County, um, and we had worked with Laura Fisher from Marathon County. Um, and part of the grant was to have an alternative to our suspension program, um, regarding strictly toward vaping. Um, but that kind of led to item number A under discussion, so, but we'll just focus on this for right now. Um, so, um, instead of, I guess, immediate reaction when a student is, has a vape, has something on them, is to go to suspension. So we have to have, this is a handbook alternative to suspension, um, but also, we have done a little deep dive, and Elise Khan is kind of our coordinator of the, um, in-depth program, so I'll let her speak on it. We kind of trialed a couple things last year, um, more of like a group, um, that didn't work so well, so we, we're new to this, we've asked other school districts, we've actually met with, um, a couple other school districts, and just asked questions like, how do you implement this in your district, and what does it look like, and how does, how do the kids respond to it, and what age do you start at? Um, so I'll let her speak specifically to some in-depth.
I think one way that this is only gonna get better is because we weren't doing it as an alternative to suspension this year, we were suspending and then doing the in-depth program. And to be honest, the kids in it were kinda like, what's the point? Like, what are you gonna do? So moving forward, they get caught vaping with a vape, whatever, they will be doing the in-depth program. If they can successfully complete the in-depth program, they're good results, they learn something, it's great, they stayed in school. If they cannot successfully complete it, that they're sitting there like, I don't care, I love vaping, then we're gonna move to suspension, because then it's not working. This is for first-time offenses, this is not if you get caught, you know, illegally vaping, you don't go through the program, then you're in big trouble. Um, but you're going through, um, it talks about, you know, like, triggers, it talks about identifying, you know, like, alternatives, identifying your support system, kind of, it does give you like the background of like, let me go into really like how bad this is for you, it kinda talks about like the cost too, and like a bigger goal, so I do think that this can be something really great, I think, like, we're kinda just in like the motivation to care.
And the, and the, you know, like, you suspend on this, doesn't tend to hold nobody, checking in with them, like, the more of the education piece is coming with the in-depth part of it.
And definitely, one of our middle school parents is kind of like, we did like a reentry after suspension meeting, like, okay, so, yeah, like, she did her homework for an hour, and then she was just sitting at home for the day, as a day off of school, like. Um, and something we wanna add in with this too is kind of some more parents involvement with this, because that's kind of been an issue, like, if we could have the parents on board and like have a little accountability with them, we think that we would get much farther.
Okay, so how much was the grant for? Can you show us?
Yeah, four thousand dollars.
I think we could get a grant.
Middle school, uh, through, uh, so middle school, two thousand, and then the high school, two thousand dollars.
I'm a little confused though, I mean, we could have our own grant, just have them pay a two hundred dollar ticket or something like that, all the money we get from that. But for something like this, where does this even come from? I mean, who who's done any research into this, and I'm assuming it's done a proven program somewhere? And how does Marathon County offer some school district in Wood County a grant?
Well, I think it all came from lawsuits that were put out where, um, was it Jewel, or whatever, where they, um, which people were sued because they were advertising towards young kids and stuff, so there was a lawsuit, so that in turn is how they're helping to pay for the grant, um, so that they they can educate students instead of encouraging students to do that.
These citations are still a piece of this, Chris, but this, if that component doesn't go away, and and if the student chooses not to, for the first offense to do this, then they would be suspended. Like, this would be an alternative option for a first-time offender to be able to go through a program that is kinda, it re- it reduces the precipitism of, like, of the occurrence of it, because that's true, like, the idea is that if kids are vaping, typically, there it's an addiction, that there's a problem here, and this drives more into that piece of where they would be getting some of that proactive help in terms of trying to maybe break the addiction, but to be clear, there's still a punitive piece of this from the, it wouldn't stop like a report being made to law enforcement to issue a citation, and I agree with you, I would tell you, I'm firmly in your camp, that I I shared that in my former district, I helped lobby with the city to raise the municipal citation for vaping to two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and shocker, we break the curve vaping because it's supposed to get sick. So that's a piece of it for sure, the punitive, this is more that piece of, for those kids who maybe are on the fence and just started, that it's some, it's another.
Hey, my, my thing is, okay, I'm a student, and I know that, well, I'm gonna sneak this vapor on or do whatever. Well, because I don't have to face suspension, or I don't have to face this or whatever, I'm, they're gonna, they're gonna offer me this program, you know? Well, the program's gotta be very painful, nor for them to change the mind.
A couple things, if they're not going to not pick the in-depth program, like, there's often, we have to come up with what, like, the alternative to a suspension looks like for our school. So we had actually looked into this before the grant, like, it just kind of all came together, um, I just, how many, they, like, how many? We had under ten, so, under ten, between the high school and middle school this year.
Great suspension.
Yes, like, under, that I confidently say that, and I would say of those kids, how many do they really care about suspension? Like, I feel like that didn't faze them, like, I'm like.
They're vaping, they might care about a lot of things, but anyways, so you need to tell me now, if somebody's smoking a tobacco cigarette, they don't qualify for this program?
No, this one, this is also for nitty, like, it's strictly smoking, but it's not like smoking.
So smoking weed, that don't count?
Yeah, that's, that's literally the group, yeah.
Yeah.
And the next program is just like a one and done. It's like, how many sessions?
It's four week session, and so what we're doing is they do the four week session, and then at the end they write a reflection, kinda like what did you learn? Like they're writing a reflection, and then that will be presented to like either if they're middle school or high school will be presented. And then they ultimately get to say like, you know what, okay, like we did this program, I think this was useful, like you're good results. Or they're gonna say like, what a job. Like we're moving to suspension and citations can still come. Like, so they might do this, they might do the program, they might get suspended, they might get a citation too, they might...
In the hours to actually complete the program, including doing the presentation, typically would add up to more than they would spend if they were suspended. So that's that piece, right? This is, believe me, they're gonna have to put in some time and some effort into the, this piece. And a student, now I wanna be clear, like I think I answered you guys correctly, if, if a student is like, I'm not doing all that, I'll just take the suspension. They have every right to just, they can take the suspension, right?
Yep.
No, okay, yeah, just wanted to...
But you know, you know, like the parents, like my kids not doing that program, they can, they...
And another question, that I'm not trying to jump in, but the thing the board may have this, is if a student brings a vape to school and gives it to another student, not using it, that raises to a different level of that. That is, like I have an abuse, like if they're distributing it at school, that's a whole different realm than this right now. This is truly looking to help some of these kids who may be dipping a toe in the water with this, and that maybe can help them come back, so.
So it's logged when they get their first offense, and then if you get a second offense, it's under the line.
No, you don't have an option.
Second offense, correct.
Strictly penalty.
Correct, yeah. This is truly designed to try to get those kids that are, and I'm not saying we don't care about kids who are, like, have Benedict, but this is designed to, alright, you, you made a mistake. He needs some help to get you up, now, if you come back to come up later and do it again, if you don't, this is not your option.
It's your idea that this money comes from this Jewel company.
From the lawsuit.
Ultimately, from the lawsuit. And it's being pushed out to school districts all over the nation.
Yeah, we're not the only one. I think there are a couple other local...
Have you learned a point? I'm just, uh, I'm just up, what, like, are we, do we buy the curriculum from in-depth?
You know, like I did the training through it.
Sure, okay.
And like, and it happened another, and we chose this one before the grant too. We were, um, it was Wood County. I can't remember who came out to talk to us about this, um, two women. And they gave us like a little brochure that had all of our options. Some you have to pay for, some are done online with kids alone. We thought in person would definitely be better, since I am here, like available, we'll be doing it. So I went through and did like the little training, and so we have all the materials.
Are you gonna do the pre-hoc test also, so that we can, we'll have the data?
Data.
I thought we'd get that though. That might, we've never had a kid all successfully complete, uh, the student we tried it with. Like I said, it was like, we're moving on to something else. I'm not sure if that comes to us or if that is just for them. So I'm looking to that.
But there is data...
Yes.
That is collected.
Yeah, and I feel like we would definitely have, like, I mean, we could tell you, like, there's stuff that they're supposed to be writing weekly and stuff, and you can, you can tell kind of too, like, who's getting something out of this and like who would...
And to be clear, I, I will just say this by heart out loud, we talked about ten suspensions associated with vaping. I'm certainly not trying to tell you we only have ten students who are vaping here. You may be shocked to find out, it's very difficult to get people to admit to it. And if you get a report, they have it on them, uh, I don't need to tough press this to the law enforcement, it's amazing where kids can go through the trouble to hide, uh, devices like vapes and stuff. So, not trying by any means to say there's only ten kids who are doing it, that's the students who are able to attach with them in the building. Um, it's very difficult to, to get them because they're smaller devices and kids will get very creative hiding them, um, in places you wouldn't believe. And I don't mean none of the persons that are talking in the building or whatever else, but, uh, I just wanna clarify on that.
I think the good thing is just to educate kids because, um, ultimately that's our goal.
Yeah. Especially the younger, like I feel like they...
They've been highly educated on the use of nicotine products at this point. Their whole life they've been educated on it. So now it's to the point where they don't care. So, the education portion of it, I mean, I, I like the fact of anything that it's gonna, the word's gonna get around that, you don't wanna go through this, this sucks.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, that's, for me...
Well, and you have to meet with, uh, and you have to give your instructions to, uh, that's the, that's the...
Unfortunately, a lot of times in these, and I've sat in some of these interviews in the past, these students I did in back in the day, is a lot of times what we find out when we ask these kids. That we do who found with them, where did you get this from? And we verify this when we call home, and a lot of times we have families that will, adults will give them to them. Um, because there's still a misnomer out there that this is healthier than smoking cigarettes, like it's, it's better. So, yeah, there's been a lot of stuff out there, but there's still amazing some of the stuff we hear. But we've had parents, and we have to offer, when we confiscate one of these off of student, we have law enforcement come. One of the things they ask the parents, they call, say, listen, we found a vape on you. And a lot of times parents go, that's mine, and we, they'll give it back to them, and then the lung, they can come and pick it up from them and come back. So, yeah, a lot of pretty sad stories, but, uh, I'm not, I'm not gonna say that this is gonna be the answer, but it's a step in the right direction. And at least maybe try and something different, along with the enforcement piece, where we can try to help kids out of this cycle.
And I think there's constantly updated studies that are coming out in reference to vaping effects.
Absolutely.
So I like that idea of the application, of course, and maybe that's probably what you were getting at, when you were saying that. Yeah, so, yeah, the more you're looking into this, I mean, it's, it's just...
Cash drop to get fixed.
It's not good.
And we're looking at possibly like speakers or somebody that can attest to like certain stories or personal stories, things like that. And it doesn't cost us a dime to be a part of this program, so, and we're given money to use it the best way we feel like.
They had a student come in from down, down in the southern state, a seventeen year old student who had popcorn lung, from vaping from when he was twelve, and had to have a double lung transplant. And had an epiphany after this, and was, went to school. And that was very dynamic with students hearing from a teenager who thought he was available and was vaping from a young age. He ended up having a double lung transplant before he was eighteen years old. So, yeah, the health effects, this is devastating, cost on, you know, human capital and resources.
One more thing, I hope this is just opening kind of works, but kind of if you're getting caught vaping, definitely needs mentor help. Like vaping is not their only issue. It's usually, it's a whole array of things that like, it's one of the things, so having like, instead of suspending them and sending them home for the day, where I feel like vaping might be the least of their concerns. Or, you know, the, like, the significant issue for the day, like, it just kind of gives us another opening and reflection.
Well, and potentially also tapping into, I know the school has some of the health support that's coming into the school. I think some of those resources are also certified in AODA. I mean, what could be some other resources and support around actually tapping into some professionals that what they do is AODA? And, I mean, it's just the start of a road that, you know, and, and again, there's two different things I'm hearing. One is a child caught that their parents are like, oh my gosh. And then we've, we've taken care of and we've helped with our process, we've let the parents know. And there'll be a whole other set of partnership. And then the other is, we maybe don't have as much support on the other side, and how do we support those kids with some other resources we can support?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's just another idea, um, of some of AODA support.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay, any kind of discussion elsewhere?
Any questions for administration on it should be in the poll? I don't believe I did deal with any major...
There's not a lot of major things. Um, there's a couple, like repetitive things that we just took out, like it was on a paper, we had like combined versions, we took that out a little bit, um, cleaned it up, um...
And like attendance, which is not accurate, like it talks about like...
Yeah, we really...
...have come out with three letters, which is not what was being...
We updated some of the practices.
Yes. And it's pretty laid out, like, what is the pre-excused absence, what does that look like? Um, you know, what is, what is habitual truancy? We've kind of laid it out for two of the families, um, and Elise did a really nice job. Um, but kind of like, when does the family contract is? I thought that was the only point, so, um, just the age twenty-nine, um... Just a practical question, I don't think yet needs to change in this, but it's been an area I've heard from hearings a lot. Um, so under the excused absences...
Yep.
Um, you have, may include but not limited to, my preference would be that those are new gone, like, should take any of it out of there. But again, the personal illness, the medical疾...
Give examples of the...
Okay, give examples, the don't care, the only ones.
Sure.
But I don't really care. What my question is, is just in practicality, how we operationalize that, do we even ask? As long as parents are staying under ten days, if the vet's appearance goes, my kid's gone, this is what's happening, do we even ask?
I think the one thing that I learned this year, so, like my kids were younger, I was like, we're not above the ten days, so it doesn't matter. But then they were like, it doesn't matter, because if you go to a doctor's appointment, you bring in a note, how do they help our report card?
Well, habitual pruancy effecture, but honestly, folks who are worried about the ten days aren't the ones who are impacting our habitual pruancy numbers.
Right, right. So always ask, like, if they're going to an appointment, they're always bringing a doctor's note. Sure, but like, if, um, if a parent, it's just like, kids just going shopping with me today, or we're going down to, like, do we even ask?
Both parents.
Well, yeah.
Just say it.
Yeah, or like universal day, or... And if you don't have an opinion about it, as long as it's under ten days.
If it's in the ten days, that's statutory.
Personal, like you can pay a mental health day, probably go for it.
They do say, once you get to the ten days, like just let you know who you are at the ten day mark and different, especially at the high school. Um, you know, if kids come in and they...
This is really good point, Julie. Julie, can I say for sure that we've never had an initiative to ask, no, but do we refuse? Statutorily, they're allowed ten days.
Yeah, that's very true. Um, but, I just heard, like, it just takes, if we're never gonna say no, then I just can like, well, why even have one in there? Because then no one knows, so like, and it's actually more for you guys than...
Yes.
Can you take that home? But, other than that, I thought it was great. Um, there will be a slight change on the calendar on, maybe, there's a couple pages here. Um, we don't have the high school page eight, we don't have the high school parent district conference number yet. Um, so I will be adding that and getting them updated calendar on the district website as well as in here. So that's the only minor change that you won't see.
Those dates will be set out of buildings.
Yeah.
When we get with the leadership teams to pick dates, if that makes sense.
He's Skyward, he's all crossed on.
Yes, so we are moving, um, we have a new program called NextPath, um, where all of our data for each child, um, is located. And we took Skyward off because, um, a couple reasons. What if we don't use Skyward? Or like, it's just in Skyward. Skyward will communicate with NextPath. But I think it might be an easier way for it to be automatic through NextPath. So teachers can upload that into NextPath. So right now we did say, um, it needs to be documented. Um, it's either Skyward or NextPath, we're not really sure, because it's their first time going through. So, yeah, we'll see that.
So that'll be, that'll be changed to this NextPath, or are they just...
We just are gonna, yeah, it's documented because it doesn't matter what is documented in, so then we don't have to keep changing.
And if I remember, this was cheaper than the Skyward, September was cheaper than Skyward's version doing the data tracking. I'm not saying we went with the cheaper version, but it also does everything that we needed to, and it's cheaper, which is a win-win.
Everything is...
So I don't think it's cheaper than the version, I, I don't...
Everything is...
Well, to Taylor's point, if Skyward ever, there are other student information systems. And with the problem with Skyward is that everything, if we're tracking this just in Skyward, if we ever went away from Skyward, let's say we went with Power School or, or something else.
On campus.
If in a campus, we would boost that information. NextPath, the information is shared in Skyward, but it exists in NextPath, so we wouldn't lose all of our, all of our notes around it, so. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, I need the motion.
I'll make a motion through about dates to the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six student handbook.
What's the next motion? We have a motion on the second, send it to the conversation. That's one, we'll vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, yes. I didn't mean, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six chapter.
Tammy, wanna go through, answer any questions, or can you pull that up there? Okay, I need to change the place too, somebody have it up already.
Are you... Okay. So basically, since last month, all we kind of reviewed and went, uh, we met with the committee and we kind of just changed through those dates. Be going to page seven, Tammy. Yeah, like right there. So these were the holidays that we, um, have kept to be unpaid. Uh, we had the removal of like the spring break, and then we kind of shortened the winter break. So the days kind of go along with what staff, um, gets offered for holiday days. Um, and then in regards to this, since when Tammy did the budget, we did it for that fifteen days off. So each year it might kind of change and adjust to how many vacation days will get adjusted. And that's a little bit further on, but we came to it, it was gonna be three days for this coming school year. Instead of the ten days that it was allocated before. That is on page, something, fifteen?
Oh, yeah, fifteen.
It's gonna be kicked up right there, right on the top. And then we also took out, um, the part-time, since it's only gonna be the three days, it's only gonna be offered for full-time children. Um, the part-time kids will get the days off if it's a day that they are scheduled for like a holiday day. Um, and then this will change, so like, depending on what days those holidays land on for the next year, that will alter what, how many vacation days they get to select for themselves. Like, I don't know, maybe for next year or something like that. Any questions on like the changes that, I think that was our big thing that we had to go through and adjust since last time we reviewed it?
Tammy, for folks that maybe, you know, for committee members that are like, given overview of the, the rationale behind the changes of being open more days, first of all, for, for folks who have their kids in there. But also less of those vacation days that people can pull their kids. So we're open more days, less days where people can just not send their kids and not pay for those days, right?
Correct.
Effectively. So more access, but lots of that unknown for us, where we don't know if we're gonna be receiving money for these days that folks just don't send their kids for the ten days. And all this with the underlying cause of trying to lessen that deficit that we're running in there.
Um, and I think the only other change was the statement that we added under the staff orientation thing.
Cause if you recall from the last board meeting, we discussed this, uh, the board did, and we sent it back to the committee because we needed to get the language for the vacation timeline, which is why I'm CJ. Those...
What did you get? So Tammy, we need the budget on fifteen unpaid days. So we had to match the handbook to match the budget. And so the budget that was put together that is working up towards sustainability of the childcare had fifteen days. And we talked last time, we didn't, one strategy was that people would just be paying for holidays, even though we're closed. We weren't comfortable with that, and charging families for a day that were closed, but you still have to pay us. That felt wrong. So, the strategy, the route we went was minimizing the actual days that were closed to match what our holiday schedule is for our non-salaried employees. So, you know, Thanksgiving the day after Thanksgiving, um, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, like just matching those days. And then adding up what that looks like for the next calendar year, which tended up this particular fiscal year to be twelve. And then give families the flexibility of they can request up to three more off because fifteen days not being paid for students to go within the budget. If for some reason Christmas Eve and Christmas Day fall on Saturday and Sunday, then we wouldn't have to be closed. And maybe that year, we would then increase on families to have higher, six days of... And maybe that year, we would then increase on families to have higher, six days of they can take off whenever they want to because it can equal fifteen because that's what.
That's the magic number.
That, well, that's the number at least that we put in to try to get us to a more sustainable path. So that's the logic behind what you're seeing.
And then also, we just took out, um, the table for the meals and snack rates. Since this gets adjusted, we either to get cross it off and then whatever gets approved, that way you didn't have to. We didn't have to adjust it after the food prices get approved after this.
So if you're asking people to the Pittsburgh School District website, food prices are gonna have to update it every year if food prices change. Any questions?
Okay, some more questions, or I have to motion?
I'll need a motion to approve this counter, you know?
I'll take the motion. Okay, motion and second, is another conversation? Not in a vote, on favor?
Aye.
The votes? I'll see, America, come closer, please, for twenty-five, come closer.
Typically come, to typically come this earlier in the spring, um, but the school district does not require to change their prices because we didn't have a positive balance at the end of June two thousand twenty-four. However, um, based on the budget that was presented in conversation to campus and the revised proportion of budget, food service has driven a significant deficit. Part of our plan in the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six is to increase meal costs slightly. If Jen, if you could scroll down to the section that is in green. Go up just a little bit more. I want to grab that purple section right above there. So, um, right now, I'm in the process of working on preparing, um, the audit documents. Fund fifty is looking at a surplus of a little over twenty thousand dollars. Um, that will need to get moved out. So if you recall, I moved a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, from fund ten to fund fifty to cover the deficit at that point in time. I can move some of that back to fund ten because then I'll have food service to get a zero. Which, when I started that specifically, wherever that was zero, there was never a surplus. So historically, um, our prices have been quite low. So last year, we had increased our lunch prices in nickel. Um, breakfast pricing hasn't been changed since I started ten years ago. So we have some options. If, if we do nothing, keep lunch prices the way they are, we're gonna just run a larger deficit. Um, but based on the level that I approved, or that you guys approved for two thousand twenty-five, you did increase our lunch prices. So the lunch prices, um, for the federal level is a little over four dollars. Our average weighted lunch price right now is two dollars eighty-eight cents. Average weighted means to see all of our price breaks, you know, our pre-K four, pre-K three, our four A's, and there's just a math formula, how many kids eat that, and then it's weighted. Um, so we can raise it ten cents for each of those levels. And I budgeted in a five cent increase for childcare. So if you scroll down a little bit further, okay, right there, good. Our reduced students will still pay forty cents for lunch. Um, we've never changed that. Federal government still keeps that forty cents for, uh, reduced students. And I wanted to keep breakfasts free for those reduced students. Uh, we could charge for breakfast if we wanted, um, but the the value of that is so, we thought that it's the impact for foster buyer, the social, not on children, will be, who would have to keep it at three? So I was looking to increase, um, ten cents for each of the lunches, so going from, I have P S evidently, because Belchak doesn't like P K, I didn't catch that. Um, so pre-K to grade three is gonna go up to two sixty. Grade four, eight to three dollars. Grade nine, twelve will go to three forty-five, and childcare will go up to two seventy-five. Uh, breakfast, now those prices, we have not changed in over ten years. So from pre-K all the way through grade twelve will be a dollar ten, childcare will be fifty-five cents. Now, these are big page lunch prices. So this is anybody, um, that does not qualify for pre-reduced. Now, we still encourage everyone to complete pre-reduced applications. And those will be going out to all students or families in August. It's always billed on our website. Um, one thing the public should keep in mind is if mom and or dad lose their jobs or something happens when they're ill, um, it can be only for a month or two months, and it's very quick and easy paperwork. Andres is a wizard helping people completed, if they need a helping hand. There's an extra child in the family, whether it's the foster child, the nephew child, adopted child, whatever. I mean, it still could potentially allow you to get free and reduced meals. Don't think of it as a handle, think of it as keeping our child belly full, it helps their mind, it helps them learn. There's just so much research in regards to that. Um, so what I see in this is option one is keeping our lunch prices the same, just really isn't an option if we wanna be physically responsible. I think that we need to approve the lunch prices that I showed in green in option two up there, um, to help narrow that deficit a little bit. I did some research based on what was on other districts' websites, uh, to close at the top row there. Um, you can see, we could still be the lowest for our pre-K three kids. Um, our four A's kids are kind of in the middle. Our nine, twelve kids are on the, the high end. And our breakfast, now there's a handful of districts that still do free breakfast for all students, um, but otherwise, we're the lowest of all the lunch that do charge. Are there any questions on any of this?
So the budgeted for next year was these numbers?
The budgeted, uh, what's the green for the lunch? I didn't add this in the record at that point.
Yeah, explaining how big the deficit for next year?
The deficit for next year is like a hundred, oh boy, hundreds and ten thousand?
How do you know?
Well, we're gonna have to transfer from fund, um, ten. Again, that's what we budgeted. So this will cover some of that, but we're still going to have some of that.
And if you remember Matt's presentation, i- is that one of the goals is to try to maybe reduce quality slightly if some of the programs don't impact in the number of students why they take lunch to cut costs or.
Right, and to be fair, the cost of these meals outweigh what we're charging right now with the way food prices are. The costs are outweighing this. So by what we can charge in what the state gives us for paid lunch prices, or it's state, but it comes through from USDA, we're not covering the cost of our meal.
Cause I will channel my, my dad, Andres, here for you. The single biggest impact away is the cost of food, like it's food cost. Um, is the single biggest component in, in even going in with some known steps to increase drastically. And that could happen during the school year, or things that we anticipated certain costs that go up astronomically.
If you just look at fresh fruit, that's what you can see at the market right now, just, I mean, the cost of fresh fruit's more than doubled what it was a year ago. And we've prided that offering fresh fruit to our kids in the last several years versus all the canned stuff. And yes, we could go back to that because kids don't like it as well. So there's, there's a fine line and there's kind of some dog spots in there too. Do we start giving them apple sauce versus apple slices?
I mean, that's a kind of point, like I'm thinking of, they don't work for lessons too, that sure, like, I prefer this, not this. And also, for burning, I think, hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about that?
That's some, that's some people's jobs.
Right, and how much, so those are. But how much could it all reduce and make that deficit worse because kids aren't gonna eat anything?
We will.
We won't know. That's, there's just so much. But if lots of people are eating, lots of people are paying, you're buying a lot of food.
But if you're ordering.
I mean, yeah. Overhead.
You should have a greater target for this. There's so many unknowns about school lunch in that, that fine line of you're buying materials where kids wanna eat it. So, so we don't know. Like, all we know is we can go in with what we think is going to do the best job of reducing that, because we know obviously raising, that's a no. We raise them, except if all of a sudden a whole bunch of people stop taking lunch. Yes, that would happen, but we may end up losing money on that.
Well, if we look at the cost of a, a lunch, go out to meal, go out to eat, download the text, or just go grab an ice cream or coffee or whatever.
The cheapest value on a dollar's down to like seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. When you turn a value of the cheapest.
When, when a child qualifies for a, for a free lunch, our reimbursement for that cost.
Is more.
Is more, what do you mean it's more?
Like, the USDA reimburses more per type of college. So our free, we get more because we're not collecting money, and our reduced kids, we get a little bit less. But we're not, oh, we collect the forty cents, so that is, our paid is even less that we get just for collecting money.
So the public would be getting for breakfast, yeah?
Yes, the federal aid, federal aid, K two, yes. So, and then the, over four dollars is what they're thinking we're charging. So that's kind of where we, we get hurt as well because we haven't raised our prices for so long. And we've tried to keep very conscious of our family situations that right now, you know, we're looking at four dollars for this, so they're basing their reimbursement to us for paid meals. I'm charging four dollars plus, and there's no way we could do that.
And that what?
I was gonna say, oh, it's beneficial. Like, if I have a parent come and they're like, oh, my God, manager, talk right now, you lost my job, I need to get them to fill out an application. Yes, because that would actually be helpful. It's not hurting us.
Not at all.
It's helpful. And I hear sometimes there is that one.
Well, it might be much different.
Well, it, it will change, like, the second day we set jobs, the second day.
Yes.
Secondly, it could change, and it, it also changes our title funding. It will change our title funding if, if people are on free meals. Um, and we can't force anybody to fill it out, but we, we provide them with the applications to fill it out.
And the, any leads you asked earlier about those things for card? The higher your numbers of your low S E S pre-reduced lunch, actually, the, the multiplier increases as far as your tax. So actually, there is no reason, anything that would be a detriment to support their families that needed to halve mine to fill out.
Okay, and there's the E D T program, which the state has been running, um, well, through the federal government, but we've been running it. So Matt can run it every October, so that will pull every student that's in, um, a known situation. So whether they are qualified for Medicare, whether they're a foster child, it pulls out that. Well, funding's gone for that now, so we're not gonna get that anymore. So we're not gonna get those automatic people anymore. So we gotta try and capture all those other people.
Which I feel like a lot of our families kind of lied on, like they.
Right, right.
Yes.
And it, it will not anymore. So, and I know Matt was working on that when he sends his mailing with Jen, that we capture, try to capture for their, their benefit, not just for ours.
That's a good question.
We would like to give free meals to everybody that's, that's the state funded.
So can you do us a favor sometime? And, and this would not be, this would not be something we would decide immediately, but I feel like we at least need to know. So then we can make a decision. Could you find out, could you look and see what vendors can come in to do meals? What would the cost be? And just compare it against us losing a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
You're talking like a Tahoe or a.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm Googling them right now, and I know I'm using A I, so who the hell knows what I'm getting. But the, what they're saying, the average right now in Wisconsin is in the ballpark of what we're charging. Now, I don't know how that all played out. So I think, and again, it doesn't, it doesn't mean we would change this tomorrow. I understand what I'm saying. I understand I just made a whole bunch of people get all freaked out about it, but I feel like when we're in this type of a situation, we at least need to make sure that we're, like, we can do it as cost effective as someone else could do it, or what are our alternatives? Because that money is, is, is not available to actually educate our kids, and I know we need to feed our kids. I, I hundred percent agree we need to feed our kids, but we just need to make sure that we explore all things. So I think if we don't think that we can do it, I, I a hundred percent will be supporting raising it ten cents. Because we have to keep up, or we're in the situation we're in because we haven't raised it in so long. So I agree that we need to do that, but I also think that we need to make sure that there isn't any other alternatives out there because the truth is, is we're gonna have hard decisions coming up because we're not getting great terms, like, we're not.
Right, I did not look at that. I did look at that when it was just your doc's, you know, just retirement. I had looked at the other food options, but that was pre-COVID. And at that point, it was more cost effective to be perfect.
All our own, but it's after COVID, it's lesser prices are.
And I'm not saying it still won't be, but I think because this is where we're at, I think we have to. Look at it and just know what are all of our options. And again, not because we're gonna change it in thirty days. Like, it could be a future thing, but I, I think that we need to at least know what our options are.
Or any, anything, like, getting, figuring out different ways to get everybody to offer food. I mean, because whatever we've been doing isn't, you know, so we may, you know, have a, we'll pick something different we should come up with. Because that's a lot of money, and like, everybody we pay here, they're all paying higher food prices too. And now, you know, the ages go up, and there's people, and it just snowballs, it's a lot. So if nothing else, we're at least actively looking for a way to mitigate all these places where we're finding out there are like big deficits, not small ones.
Right, and I know that we put, you know, like subscriptions, which is entry, it's mail, it's old apps, open houses, when the elementary does, that could cool right. They're all over, um, but we can't, by law, make them complete. I'm not, have everybody complete it.
I'm not suggesting we're not doing a great job. I am just suggesting that when we're a hundred thousand off, we have to make sure that there's not a more effective way to do it.
So just to be clear, there are hands up in the crowd? And I, I wanna be clear, the board can take input from anybody they want, so I don't wanna be calling on people. I mean, I'm in public, so you guys can call on other folks too, the board, just, I would love to hear you do a B P F A.
I have had a question on like, do, for breakfast, do they get different foods? Like, do I sort of get more, or like, you know, like, they have the same price?
They get a larger portion.
They get larger, yeah, for breakfast, I mean, it's.
So I, they probably have a few different options, but they can take literally everything.
On the thing.
At least three years.
Right, and a lot of them sell, so it's pretty few for breakfast options, or something.
Yeah, they, they offer it twice.
So, I mean, we encourage them to take all of it, say one for snacks between school and your sporting event or whatever, so, yeah.
Yeah, so we can't, part of the reason why I think it's so critical that we increase by ten cents, we actually can't increase by more than ten cents.
That's true.
So even if we were two dollars off because we haven't increased for five years, we can't make that up. We're actually capped at only ten cents. So, so that's part of, like, so that's the most we could actually do.
How many meals do we serve at there?
Oh, the Lord.
Matt.
Um, I think I wrote, no, I don't have that. I don't know, I lost my head.
Can I ask?
And I figured it out last year, and the nickel was like two thousand dollars, maybe.
Oh, it's five thousand, she has.
Yeah, it's the total.
We've served the same amount of lunch, lunches.
Right, it's, it's all like that.
Can we tell whether it's, that's from breakfast or from lunch?
No. Because a lot of food is there the same, like, if you have apples for breakfast and lunch.
And, and for folks here, just to clarify, for those that aren't aware, one of the other things, there is some, I guess, some logic behind it, but that when you're running a surplus, you have to spend it now. So you can't, like, when we were running those surpluses, you have to spend it. The state makes you spend it. So people that would say, well, why don't you save up those years, and say, you can't. The state doesn't allow it to. So when you have a year like this, we have to spend that money on like, you know, who, like, you have.
We were only allowed, they have one month worth of coins in our fund balance. We had like forty-one thousand at the end of last year. We were over, right, which had a thousand dollars post-COVID, and they were sending us letters saying, how are you spending this?
They're spending this more. They're spending this more.
You have to, which is why we didn't increase rates for so long. Because we were, like, forced to spend money we didn't even need to spend. Why would we charge people more? It's just, we did make improvements, we did, I didn't need to spend it. We improved a lot of our community equipment, but if, if we would have, like, brought up trying to save some of it, we'd have to, like, block it.
I'm not worth it. Cam, I think the board said anybody wanted comments?
Uh, my comment was just, but Pam kind of answered it. I always think camp requires people to fill out the application because it is on our Skyward enrollment. So it is there, but if we can't make them fill it out, you can click out of it, like, you don't have correct.
Every family gets it during registration. We all get it, and you have to click to get it off, to do it. So you have to hit right there in front of everybody who registers. We cannot make them fill out the paperwork.
I think something like.
I guess we can, yeah, I like that idea.
It's hard to fill out for some of our families. They're asking for very specific things that they don't know, or things that they would, but they do.
It's usually only asking what's your monthly revenue, your household for the month.
That's. Do we offer social?
But yeah, we help them complete it.
Yeah, do we offer?
Yeah, but I help them, like, you just have to find this number. And finding that number for some reason will really, or study.
But do we say that, and maybe we do already, do any communicating families, do we say if you need help filling this out that we have a resource for you?
I mean, I was, like, at an open house, I definitely got them. I kind of thought they were being something like they come to someone out there or something, but like, I definitely.
Right, they don't want, they don't want, like, the federal government doesn't want them shamed if they're filling it out. You can't, but they can certainly schedule a, like.
Yeah.
Have a family who clearly is not qualified, still fill it out.
Yeah, so everyone could fill it out.
You betcha.
So we could take an approach of some type of, like, incentive to actually incentivize everyone to fill it out, which then change no one because everyone's filling it out.
I just have to check with the rules to see, yeah, incentivizes, I don't know.
Really?
I, I don't know. Twenty-five dollar Amazon gift card. But I mean, it's way.
The one extra apple, just spend it here.
It can go, like, yes, it's a surprise. I think it's a piece of art. You get your hundred cents or stuff. I don't, I don't know if we get that, I don't know if we get that stuff. And I think that, you don't know if you're gonna qualify, if you're like, okay, I'm just gonna do it, but you don't know. And it's a help one, and I think they know that it's.
I mean, even families who, you know, you're not getting financial aid for your kids to go to college, they are all over you until you fill it out. It's like done it, but they are, I mean, because it's, it, it has impacts in so many different ways and so many different areas. And so I actually think that there could be a really positive thing to, to transition to the culture of it's not free and reduced. It's actually a form that you're filling out, which just helps you see what your cost is for meals. Because I think when you say, well, it's free and reduced, like, it feels like the title met versus every student filling this out. And we'll let you know if that, like, I actually think that that becomes even more intuitive than actually.
Well, I can talk to Matt and verify with him to start the language, and we don't want to get into any trouble with these guys and U S D A, or then they pull all the money. So it's something I'll look at in talking about, um, you know, inspired that. And when they send their mailing in August, maybe jealous to help me remember to, you know, double check that, to have a look at that. Especially to mention this part about the E D T not being automatic this year.
Uh, and that they get, um, like, talking to my sister-in-law, you get a hundred and twenty dollars per kid for summer.
What? Tell me more.
If your kid is on free delivery, once you get a hundred and twenty dollars per child, for your, on the E D T, on the quest.
So the summer, you can't remember the summer, I did not know that.
So my, my sister-in-law has, like, eight kids in school, so she gets nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, did not know that.
And our families are getting them, because a few of them, they have them activated, so I was helping them this summer activate them.
But what's not working is the automatic import into food service. That's the part that's not working. Um, and it, you did not think, why, I, because there's a, October counts, like, on the eleventh or the tenth, or something like that, that auto falls into food service, and that's the piece that wasn't going to be working.
I don't know, but she, she.
Well, no, not even, like, they're gonna have to fill it out.
But anything that, you know, if we're allowed, anything that we could change the culture from you fill this out because you have a need, to this is just an automatic, everyone fills this out.
It's a system.
Right, yeah, um.
And I would tell you, the numbers will indicate that the numbers of, of kids goes down as they get older. And that is absolutely, I would go to my great state, the stigma associated with you get older with being on free reduced lunch. You can't catch the people funding it all. So it's a region, there's a really, you see percentages drop and the rates go up for the numbers.
And the only one, the only one that I would think most important is Matt Andre, unless the league is helping, someone completed, Matt Andre is the only one that is broken.
I, I don't have access, like, I couldn't even access which of our, like, like, that is closely guarded data, information of who's on free reduced lunch.
We need to bomb the format, it's not like we're standing sitting.
I'll make a motion to increase the breakfast and lunch prices for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, full year by a dime per meal, um, in each category. Um, it's.
Except for childcare records.
Except for childcare, by the projected increase per cam recommendation.
I'll second.
I'm in a motion of second, is there any other conversation?
Just that, could you please see what it would look like for an alternative in the next three months? Just so that, at least, like, we're making sure we're, I still don't even know what decision we would make around it, but I think we have to know. Thank you.
Would you call in favor?
Aye.
My D, notice about the American standards policy.
So this is a yearly requirement that has to take place in the July board meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the existing policy three thirteen.
I'll say motion to approve.
Okay, motion of second, is there any other conversation? Call in favor?
Aye.
I guess. Insurance for that.
Man, you're on the air.
So, as you can see, it's a premium level, a small amount. Um, our commercial property this year, um, he was able to get it down to three percent. The, uh, state average was a ten percent increase in value. So they look into property value, and they only increased our three percent instead of ten percent. Um, so that's how it was insured for that piece. Um, our commercial package, which is just general auto liability and then, um, school board emissions and our cyber. The cyber component went up a little bit. Um, the business auto physical damage, that's a minor change. Our crime portion was a minor change. Worker compensation actually went down. Um, our mod rate is point seven six. And we are guaranteed a, what, thirty percent flat workers' comp, um, refund or a discount that'll be paid at the end of the year. Um, so overall, our increase, total increase went up about four thousand two hundred dollars.
Who's our commercial package?
Commercial package, excuse me.
And do we keep our same insurers?
The, all the insurers are the same. He actually went off a bid for all three, for, um, C I C does one, A G S does one, uh, and the right insurance does our property. Hmm. What's hurting us to go out and really change is that we had the floor.
I was just gonna say.
That was still hanging on there. Yeah, that's hanging on there. Nobody else, I mean, he couldn't get a better bid on that. Um, right does the equipment floater, crime is community insurance corp. The, um, emissions auto liability, general liability, and, um, the, uh, cyber is also community insurance as well. Community's less, A G S, and then accident fund, workers' comp.
Workers' comp.
Accident fund. So he actually went out to bid on all of these, um, and they all are existing ones came back with, um, they were the best. And they actually, um, I've worked with the, uh, accident fund with workers' comp issues. And obviously, we've worked with right insurance for our claim. Uh, so the fact that they held as low as they are in today's insurance market, I, I was pleased with that. Some of the, um, things that we had no control over, and neither does they, um, it's just the industry-wide change, was the wind-in-hail deductible. Um, instead of being a percentage of the property, which if you've noticed on your homeowners, you probably got a rider in the last year or two, the thing that the wind-in-hail damage on your roof, they're not going to cover it, although they're depreciating the value of it to what they're giving it to you on a percentage basis. He was able to get them down to fifty thousand dollars per building. So like, this building, the C T E began in the elementary, is all under one roof. So that would be a fifty thousand dollars cost, and that's it. And then the high school would be fifty thousand if we were to.
Nationally, they've just been getting hammered on the killing with.
And Central Wisconsin, it seems they had a fair share in the last few years. Um, cyber liability too there, that deductible went from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand. That was industry-wide, there was no control over that. Um, and the, the pleasing thing was that our, our workers' comp mod rate stayed the same, point seven six, but the rates are decreasing because in addition to our mod rate, we just had really good trend going, yeah.
Which is great, I mean, our wages are going up, which.
Yes, our wages went up significantly, which our workers' comp went down.
Which means that we're really doing well, because typically it goes, it's based on, well, it is.
Yes.
So I was very pleased with this overall.
And then would we recommend that we would follow for the optional coverage the same as we did in twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes, just the violin act component of it.
Okay. Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion to approve the insurance premium for the question presented with the addition of violin act under optional coverage.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion of second, is there any other conversation? Call in favor?
Aye.
Post, thank you, guys. All right, any questions? Are you approved?
Back again. All right, we do not have a presentation other than what you received in your board packet. Uh, so what was asked from last time is, like, what would this look like here at Pittsville? So we have a student that's gonna go through it with you on how she would calculate her lottery score. Um, I actually won it wrong. Um, so she's gonna, um, both of the first page together, so those are all of her classes, sorry, Nora, you can just talk.
Okay, so the first page is all of my classes. So in the past, so I'm going into my junior year next year. So all of my past classes include mental wellness and stress management, which is a dual credit class. Um, oral and interpersonal communication, which is also a dual credit class. And then I took algebra two and A Bush. So the dual credit classes are point five per term, and each of those are only a term. So each of those get point five. So that's one honor point, just with those two classes. And then algebra two gets one honor point per term, and I took it for two terms, so it's master one class. So that gets two points, and then same with A Bush. So just at the end of, like, going into my junior year, I, I have four honor points, which, if you look, it should be a chart in your packet.
Okay.
Yeah, they're back.
They're back.
They're back. That puts me at, like, five to four point O G P A, and we're gonna, for this exercise, we're just gonna put it up there. Yeah, so that puts me at the very bottom of the Kum-Lah-Ae stand. So sixteen for my total score there. And then we're gonna go with my projected classes too. So next year, I plan on taking advanced count, A P Lit, A P Pre-Test, and two E C T T courses, so really college credit classes. And we'll just go through the breakdown. I think it's on a sheet, but I have to go through it. Um, so A P Lit is a basic class, which is one point per term. And then that is one point per term. That is a two-term class, so it's master one, so, yeah. And then things Pre-Test, Advanced Count, maybe it's the same thing.
It's a half.
Oh, that's the half point, so that's one point. And then E C T T is usually about point seven five. High school credits, so that's how many, um, points you would get for that too.
So with the E C T T for a one, let's see this right, per one credit college, and a college class, that's point two five of a credit on the script, on the training script. So like, when Nora says she has point seven five college classes, that will be a three-credit college class. Does that make sense? So that's how she got her point there. And then, so all of the charts, that brings me to like ten point five honor points. So I'm about in the middle of the magna Kum-Lah-Ae at the end of my junior year. So the second page of your packet would be how they, or how we calculate, um, where the students are at. So Nora had a four point O G P A, the honor points through for junior year is ten point five. Um, and then how you get that score, how you get your lottery score, is you take your G P A times your honor points, which equals your lottery score. So she's at forty-two, um, and then that would be her maximum, or she's at currently after her junior year. The chart is just a visual, if you wanna look at that. Um, what I'm gonna kind of go into is that last page there. So this is an example, um, let me get my copy. So, um, you will see, uh, the student's G P A is the first line across the board. So I just have a couple of questions, I'm gonna make you think and do some math. So, um, currently for G P A right now, um, which is how we base off of the Allen Sal, so how would you order those students, um, from G P A? Like, what, who would be the first? Who has the highest G P A?
Free, Johnny.
Johnny, okay, who has the second highest G P A? Yep, Roman, then.
Skyler.
Yep.
Julia.
Yep, yeah. Yep, perfect. Great, I found that.
Why, why does Julia not get up?
She has. That's why I told her, because I hope that if I, uh, put it in black and white, it would cut off, because it looks like she only has. So, when you look at that, okay, that is how, like, they're planned for it. Okay, thanks, Carol.
Wow, I need to have these.
Okay, so that's how we currently do it. Okay, now, the second line, that is their honor points. Their honor points are based on the classes or the rigor that they put. So as you see, okay, how would you rank them according to their honor points? Who would be first?
Eleanor.
Oh. Then?
Roman.
Yep.
Johnny.
Yep.
Leo.
Yep.
Julia.
Okay. And this is not a trick question, okay, but then their lottery score would be the same order as what they are in the school. Okay, so this is a visual, okay, for you guys to say, okay, we can base it off of G P A, which we do right now. Okay, but as you notice, when you do the honor points, or really look in deep dive of those classes that these kids are taking, number one is not corresponding to the most rigorous classes. Okay, are actually, the third ring, okay, is taking the most rigorous courses. So we're honoring, when we, when we wanna honor students, we wanna honor students on the, on the rigor that they're taking, not just on their G P A.
And to be clear, all three of those students would receive.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And Johnny would receive the valedictorian, um, scholarship because that's.
Marquette, yes, correct.
Yeah, so, so can I expand on that for a moment? Because I want to, I want to be very clear about that, that academic excellence scholarship that Julie just referenced, and the tech excellence scholarships, statutorily indicated have to be based on G P A and G P L. There's no way going on that, that's from the state. So that, in that situation, that would not be based on those courses. The state mandates that those scholarships go to the highest G P A, go into a state school, and the highest G P A go into a next school.
Not technical.
What?
Technical, if not, it's only by A P A.
Did that change since I was a high school principal?
The technical excellence has an application problem, which is the GPA and the points that some of the CTE.
The CTE courses and stuff, okay. So but you can't, you can't base it on lottery score.
Correct.
But like.
It is CTE GPA for.
So thank you for clarifying that. So you can't, though, if this is the direction we go, that will stay independent of this just because we don't have any control over it. I also will clarify, and I don't want to still fail or thunder, I'm sure they will cover this. There is still class rank, colleges require class rank. We will still be keeping, like, we will keep class rank.
Can I input?
Please.
Let me say college request. So I wanted to look at all the information we talked last time. So I reached out to UW Health, which is the now board campus, UW Health. So they are the organization that communicates with every UW, and I didn't do anything other than say UW system. But they, if they, well, class rankings are required for the Wisconsin Guarantee, it's not a requirement for regular admissions.
Can you tell folks what that Wisconsin Guarantee is?
So the Wisconsin Guarantee was new for this graduating class. It is the top five percent are automatically admitted to every UW, so he has the top ten percent is to every UW except Madison. So for the, in echo of the junior year class ranking. So that has to be visible on a transcript for a junior going into their junior year, so senior applying this fall, it has to stay either top five or top ten, or their class rank as, you know, one out of forty on their transcript in their application for their universities of fall. That rating would then change their junior, that doesn't matter, their junior year. The, I asked about that too, like kind of working these two things together. And they said, again, while that is required for that, the class range provides context, but the admissions committee, and this is a direct quote, is focusing on the course rigor and showing your course work, the full academic profile, but then they look at the GPA and academic performance. So they do look at the GPA and the rigor, but they are not looking for, if you're number one or number two, becoming context to other schools. That doesn't give them what they're looking for. But then that trickles to, okay, admitting into a university is different than the merit scholarships you get when you want to go to a university. So the merit scholarships would be the scholarships that you get based on your academic performance, not the separate scholarship applications that look at other things. And again, they are focusing on the GPA, test scores, and academic achievement. And this, I just quoted what he said, the lottery system does not negatively impact your student's eligibility for these opportunities as they evaluate academic excellence regardless of what ranking system it is. So we wouldn't lose out on students getting merit scholarships by rank because they're looking, now they're looking at GPA, which we are saying we don't want them to focus on GPA, but we can't control what the status of science or academic excellence or other things. We can totally control what we want to recognize to sort of keep that collaboration of like encouraging others to do well, not competing for, like, you have four point oh, I have four point oh, I found this test and I don't have any more. But together we could both see.
Well, how did they, how did they just say rigor then?
So they're looking for, each university is pretty similar, but they're looking for those college track courses. So they say, depending on what, you know, what you're going to college for, if you're focused on sciences, or if you're looking for different class sciences. But if you have involvement in the ECTP for the college level courses, which is why they're worth more points in the lottery system, they're looking for your high achievements or high GPA, and if they're greater in college level courses or those college track courses, which each university will break down like what that would be in sciences, you know, whether it's for, depending on the core rating factor.
To be clear, I should have clarified, I am in support of this. When I was getting at what the GPA was, that, I go on the way. So if a parent needs the GPA for. What's that?
The rank.
The rank, sorry, class rank and GPA, those are also gonna be, here we'll have those to share what I, what I wanted to articulate as far as, so if the lottery system was in place, it doesn't eliminate those other things, so it brings in.
I have a question based on what you just said, just to make sure I understand. So does ECTP, does a course for ECTP have a higher point value than AP, language and comp?
It doesn't because we have, yes, so we have.
The point is our AP numbers, right? Because we decided, well, right, because number three is a whole separate issue that every kid's gonna want to take classes that we have to pay extra for because.
It's quite simple. The points are directly related to the credit value they receive on a high school transcript. So, you know, you take a three-credit college course, they're getting point seven five high school credit. That's, that's.
Our AP classes are weighted more in-house with our.
It's effective. Because they don't want to take.
So that same course would be weighted as one if they took an AP Lit. If they took AP Lit and ECTP, which I know English approved because they provided, but let's say we did it, they'd actually get point seven five.
They get two in-house for AP. And then side with English composition, that would go three college credits.
I just don't want to create an incentive that we're encouraging them to, so we're actually encouraging them to take it.
Take our last. Versus point seven five.
Could you do anything more?
I think I'll just add the like, you know, admission to UW, the merit scholarships are separate also from other scholarships that you could apply to anything on the beginning of that if you want to. So I reached out to a few and I got correspondence from Macey, which hosts a lot of our local scholarships. And I just said, I did not say that if we're considering a new way, what would it affect for our students, what would that affect scholarships? Like selection. So she said that for when she had, they hold the portal, and she can tell that there are two scholarships in their entire portal that state class rank must be a certain percentage, and if those students don't qualify for those two, they're march to the student, march to scholarships only. So that means that there are no scholarships that if they don't have a certain class rank, they would qualify for. Now, that doesn't mean that scholarships don't ask that question. And then she said, the, the ranking of the class, again, when she combined with data to give to committees and for all committees, she creates sheets for GPA, she creates sheets for volunteer hours and other things. She does not list class ranks on spreadsheet unless the city act was, which she, she not very confident in that. So I thought that was, that kind of just correlated to looking at the holistic students and the courses they're taking, the involvement they have, academic or non-academic, that the number that they are out of forty-three isn't guaranteeing them, doctors, the other things that are. But we didn't have last time.
Yeah, so we've been kind of brainstorming that first page, something you'll see there, kind of like what courses, would we, our committee has done a really nice job, what courses would be come as rigor. And actually, I adjusted it a little bit this afternoon, behind the dual credit classes, I did put BTE. So like, if a family wanted to know, like, hey, is this a conical or is this not a conical? So that is a little bit of a change. And then before we had the point behind every course, but it just got too complicated. And so we just had a description of top, it's by term. You know, you get point five by term, unless it's an AP class, that is one point per term. And then we have two parents on the committee, and I know Tara's gonna speak as well, but I have a quote from one of the parents that could not be here tonight. And she said, some students will not take hard classes because they worry about it affecting their GPA. The lottery system is an opportunity to recognize more students and to encourage individual learning rather than worrying about their GPA and comparing themselves to what their classes are taking that could alter their class rank. Across the nation, there are studies showing that by encouraging students to take more challenging classes, this helps to prepare students for their future careers. Let's give it a try, there will be a learning curve, but through student voices and continued evaluation of points with them, this will be helpful for our students.
Taylor, did you pre-tell this year?
Yes, and then I also have data from this year. So this year's senior class, we would have had nineteen students who were up in a grad graduation.
How many at each level do you have?
Three at Summa, seven at Meena, and nine at Coon.
So this is.
And how many were currently recognized with course? I think four. So nineteen would have, how many didn't? I mean, I know it's different, but how many didn't?
I guess maybe at graduation, what we would do is we would like, okay, we would honor them to come up and then we would cord them. Like, so like all the Mayhams would come up, and then we, or Sumo would come up. We would cord them at graduation versus just wearing, and just got rather than our committee to like, you know, they wear their course, what do they mean? You know, what does blue course mean, what do the gold course mean? So we need to do a better job of that, but.
We could make an adjustment and cord people on whatever we cord on, right? I mean, so we could do that regardless if we did.
Right, yes.
So, so the reason I ask that question, this is really important for all of us to comprehend is, this is good, this is real data. This was a very exceptional class that just graduated academically. And there is a concern about this, I think, maybe that folks say, well, it's gonna water everything down, we're gonna have too many people. This exceptional class would have had three people at the highest lottery level. Three, three would have received the highest, the gold quarters, right? Nineteen would have received some sort of significant honor, but to say like, only three would have received that elite acknowledgement, like in right now in the current system, you have your Val and Sal, right? The two give the speeches about their, so this wouldn't have watered it down where you had like fourteen, and this was a really exceptional class this year that I would say, so I think that that's a really important point to have that real data of. What would this have looked like this year? And to have nineteen kids that come up and receive those cords in a class that was exceptional academic, I think, but. All right, Nora, I'd just be curious from the student perspective, what do you think about this whole thing?
I don't know, I think it'd be like good. I don't know.
Why? Well, what classes do you think differ?
I went, me personally, I liked the classes that I take, I don't know. I'm one of those like weird students that occur every once in a while. Like my, I'm sorry, my GPA like is really important, like I'm like all A's, like it has to be all A's, I'll like, if there'll be some harsh, harsh days, if there aren't all A's. And, but alongside that GPA, I do, like, if I'm not pushing myself, I'm falling asleep in class and I don't like that. So there will be that part.
So if you do it either way in whatever system, what would move the lottery change for you if they wanted to change your courses or your?
It changed, I guess the competition between my classmates. There's definitely some tension that is known and unknown to me and, yeah. Just like knowing that like, we're not competing against each other more than ourselves and that like, we are the ultimately the ones that decide how far we push ourselves instead of how much we don't because we're afraid to like go the extra mile and just take that extra two steps or three just to like get where we think that we could be instead of where we want to be.
So do you, you're talking about that, I mean, I mean, competition can be good. And it's not always, but, so the people that, that you have in your mind that you're saying like people be, but are they gonna, in your opinion, would they take different courses for something like this?
Potentially. I don't know. It may known to me this year that apparently I was competing with somebody for valedictorian, I didn't realize I was doing it, but they were like trying to like get up there too and I don't know if they would. I would like to think that there would be still changes, just to get a little bit higher in this aspect, but.
So you're saying like, for people your age that being class rank number one would be less important than being Sumo from lottery?
Um, getting up there and just being recognized, I think is a big thing, like recognition, especially as, at my age is like a huge thing, like, everybody just wants to be recognized and seen and just like heard kind of a thing, so.
But Julia's right, we could be doing that now, because there are kids with course that.
Yeah, I agree. We did this class again in professional, there were twenty-seven courses given, but we gave courses for three point oh GPA and higher, three levels of them.
What was the highest, was it three seven five or something?
So, I have GPA. So that was like three nine nine nine.
It was three nine nine, or three nine nine. Nora, so, so to Mr. Holden's question, it may not get, get who are we gonna take riggers, they're gonna take them daily, right? But the idea would be chasing that four point oh, that valedictorian, is that could there be people who would be like, under the Val Sal that would take easier? Have you ever heard of students taking easier courses because they don't want to impact their GPA? You can keep that at four point oh, so with the double, I'm as competitive as the, in fact, I mean, there's a competition every time I said double anywhere, right? But the idea is leveling that playing field to not keep people from wanting to take risks and taking those rigorous courses. Because I go for a fact, like, I have this data from my part, we haven't started this yet, but we have six years of data. We did see a significant increase in kids taking AP courses, dual credit courses. We saw a significant increase after we implemented the lottery system, which wasn't all because of the lottery. I don't, I don't know that we asked kids, but what we did see is the kids that reached that pinnacle to get that honor that you're talking about, Nora, they earned it, like, like they earned it for sure, like, and there were still kids that took that maybe on the path that maybe wasn't as difficult, still got an honor, but it may have just been the cum laude, right? But those people that got to that top, and it was, some years it was eleven people, some years it was three people, but all of them taking that approach, and honestly, you, you came up, that was one of the most eloquent descriptions of the whole process that you just shared right there, I love that, like, in a nutshell, what you just said about, you're gonna challenge yourself, but you want to be recognized for it, right? Yeah, so, thank you.
I do know there are, I'm just gonna add to that a little bit more, there are some students that are like, yeah, I'm not firm enough to take these courses and still get out of high school with like a good enough GPA kind of a thing. And just like to change that a little bit might help, like the lottery system might help them. Just to be like, I'm not stupid enough, like, I'm not too stupid to take these higher classes. Like I might not get like a great grade in this class, but I just will take it. Like other people are still taking them and they're not like excelling in them, but I can like, I can try, kind of a thing.
I think we'd see more often than not that these kids aren't challenging themselves to prepare for the next level after high school.
Not just college, whatever that is.
Whatever that is. So, you know, they're taking our easier classes to, to prevent the risk of their GPA, which then when they get to college, or they get to tech school, or they get to wherever the next step is, they're not preparing themselves for these four years. And that's the bigger, that's the bigger problem. You know, we want them to, to challenge themselves and take rigor, but also to prepare for what is the future goal for them.
To, to speak as the director of curriculum instruction, because that is my role, and you know that. So I'm speaking now as the superintendent to say, why I support the committee's work with this and this is that what Taylor just expanded upon about challenge, getting kids to get out of the conference only challenge and felt that folks seeing just on GPA that not set up to do that, that is not, it is, it is, honestly, it's to not take risks. Because if you want to make a thing that a four point oh, it'd be like, geez, I'm getting my senior year, and Nora's finally, because she knows I'm right, where you're kind of like, the idea of saying, listen, you might get a B in this class, but if it's worth this amount of money, you're not gonna be harmed from getting that recognition and honor. Like, this board hired me three years ago, I hope for many reasons, right? When the board, one of the questions I was asked, and I will not forget this, I was asked about our data. Here, Mrs. Lippert, who's not here, asked me, our test scores are not good, what are your ideas for some of your test scores? I feel like we've made some good changes over the last several years, we're focusing on those things that matter. I feel like this is the thing to take us to that next level of talking about what do we do? Because we often talk about, we support our lower end, right? We want to bring the lower end, our kids that struggle up. Lots of times the middle gets lost, and what do you do for those students in the middle, and then what do you do for your high achieving students? This should be celebratory for those high achieving students, this piece, and for those students who are in the middle that maybe need a little encouragement to take that jump to the next, to the next level. And, and I will speak, once again, I'm a traditionalist, I understand that, well, Val Sal, we've always had that. In any traditional lottery system, you would not recognize Val Sal anymore, you would recognize. So what I would tell you is that the proposal that the committee presented to me that I fully supported, and I know Nora would be a big fan of this, is that we start basing this in right now and keep the Val Sal for the next three years. So you have the lottery and you still acknowledge the two top people for GPA. But you do acknowledge that at graduation for three years.
So can I ask a question about that though? Because I, I don't, where I stand is that I am not an educator, right? Like, so I don't know that I, I mean, if, if you're bringing to me that this is the right way to do, like, I'm gonna take your recommendation. I do struggle during before twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and this is why. I wonder how it feels to the students and the other students. If, if for three years someone becomes valedictorian or student-oriental and they aren't Suma cum laude. Like I wonder how that feels, trying to be in two systems, it's like, well, wait a minute, they didn't even get the highest honor and, and then they're recognized, like, I feel like, I'm nervous that that is going to send a message that I'm not. that I'm not, I just don't want unintended consequences and trying to do both at the same time. So I would be more in favor of that, that we're going towards this for twenty-eight, twenty-nine, if that's the recommendation of moving it forward, so that, again, we don't have a student being honored with being valedictorian and they got the wrong color.
Our committee has been supportive and, um, last week, we brought that up and discussed that for a while. We do believe, agree in that sense that we're, this is the system that we're working in. We don't want to make them feel less than the achievement, how they did achieve, however they achieved it, you know? That's, it's definitely.
May I ask, Paul?
Of course.
Yeah, and I will just tell you, I did not participate in that meeting because I had another meeting scheduled, however, I, I disagree, and I'm gonna say why. If we're worried about the feelings of that one person, I want you to think about all the students who are gonna work their tails off the next three years that would receive that honor. So that, that would be getting those cords and getting that honor and we're worried that like, so that person is obviously gonna get a hefty scholarship through that, he has a scholarship, they're gonna be listed as valedictorian. I don't think they're gonna feel too bad about it, like if they don't make Suma. Uh, so I get that point, but I also talked about, you're talking about two people potentially versus all those other students the next three years that could, could receive the honor for, for the hard work and this is the other piece. So if you're a, if you're a junior, one of those ones on the fence next year, and you know there's, okay, so this is twenty-eight, twenty-nine. The reason I like this plan of faking it in and doing that is, is that why not, why would we wait to start to get these kids to start taking these classes? Cause yeah, the freshmen are gonna do it, in sophomore, right? What about the juniors and the seniors, cause it's still gonna give them some encouragement to finish, across that finish line and, and earn that. And it's taken, it's still taken, not gonna wait from, from those folks, because I, I'll tell you right now, as soon as people start talking like, kids already talk, like kids already know the kid who, Nora's on her head, because she knows it's, it's high school, which the kids always knew that it's like, hey, that kid took relaxation testing, five, five in class, fifteen a year to get a four point oh. Like kids already talk and know that, um, so that would be my only thing I would say, I, I would be opposed. The, the board has to make a decision on that and so does the committee, but I, I was not aware that the committee had shifted from that original conversation of faking it in.
But I think too, like we would be able to see, we would be able to look at the incoming students, like we could look at that in astronomy, where they were tall and we could say like Nora just did, if, if that person is number one, are they fitting this at all? Like we could almost see that head of time, and it's like they don't meet any of this, we would know that potentially before we even make that decision. Like, like she just calculated her, she's going to be a junior, we would, you know, we could sort of plan, and that makes a, that makes a difference.
I actually, um, didn't think that the valedictorian or valedictorian might be the one with the harsh feelings because they didn't get the right cords or this, I actually thought-
I misunderstood that.
I actually thought that individuals that they're like, well, wait a minute, I'm Suma cum laude, but I'm still in this class system that this other person is recognized in the race, like I actually saw it from the other way.
Oh.
Um, in my mind, um, it being the negative.
No matter what, that, that, I misunderstood Julie, that's my bad. I thought you were saying that the valedal would go back if they didn't get Suma. That's not what you were saying?
No, but once we fully transition to this, that, yeah, being a valedictorian, you're gonna get a scholarship, at least it is. For right now, the way that, but we're not going to actually recognize it at graduation, the word valedictorian. Right, but for the next three years, we would.
That would be accurate.
Valedictorian and valedictorian. And so I actually saw it from individuals who were trying to like share, like, that you're, and they're like, wait a minute, I actually scored better and like these two people are being recognized. So I actually saw it from the other person of it being a negative, like we're trying to do something positive, but we're working in two systems and those two systems conflict with each other. And I just wouldn't want, um, I, I just wanna be thoughtful of that.
I wonder if maybe actually they see that it's a good thing because they could see that they actually compare to those that they see as like higher. And maybe like valedictorian and valedictorian turn into more of those like cords that are just like additional cords that you could maybe get and like, the laudate system is a bit bigger and like, kind of thing, I don't know.
I did not mean to say that.
Well, I, I, I mean, Julie goes, I don't, I'm, I'm indifferent, honestly, to change the field. I guess it's gonna get more people to take their classes, that's often better. But the part of that second system, could be, there's nothing we can do here to change the class rank, being a fourth, a fifth system.
Yeah.
But, I mean, so, and if we decide now for it to start, we have like these years before, for the supplement before, I feel like we actually have to have a conversation, do we really get rid of our traditions? Because a valedictorian is a word, we can decide who's a valedictorian, we can't decide if it's a scholarship. But if we want Suma cum laude number one, we want Skylar to be the valedictorian, if she's got the higher one, we can decide. We don't have to necessarily, like tonight we're not a student saying we're not gonna hold our traditions before, but we're starting a new, a new system for, for, for the degree.
Thank you for that point, Nate, is that, that absolutely would be so forth here. Is, it could be determined by the committee or recommended to the board that your top two laudates score people are your valedal yourself. We call them at a graduation and it would not be conflicting, that would be correlated to, now choosing it based on GPA would conflict with the system. But that's, so you're right to that point in that this gives us a few years to work the case out and keep, cause I know change is hard. Um, and, and if, if I'm solo, granted my voice matters more because I'm the director of curriculum instruction and superintendent, I pocket with not more than the board, but I'm saying, I would be a strong supporter of faking it in for all those reasons. Cause I feel like it checks all the boxes, is we're honoring all those students for keeping the tradition and giving it three years where we can see what the data says. Because in two and a half years from now, if we're looking and saying this is a dumpster fire, our numbers have gone down, it's not working, we can just say, hey, we gave it a good old try.
Have we shared it, have we shared this idea with the current campus students?
They got it.
Incredible.
And we worked fine on the committee, but in the children's side of the little children's.
Marissa, when was this first started?
And have we done any like surveying just to see how they're feeling? Like, like would it motivate them to do this, would it, like?
So this has been being discussed for two, two, two and a half years approximately, like.
So I would recommend that even if you're not surveying them for the decision of we're doing it or not, getting some data to make sure that we hear if there's some unintended consequences that they bring up for us to be careful of could be helpful. I'm not saying that if their feedback makes us decide to do it or not. But I do think that, you know, we say something, but Nora's like, that's not how I feel. Well, great, then who cares what I think, right? Like, you know, so it, but if we could hear from them, um, like these are things, I think it would just help get some good in, information to make sure we don't have unintended consequences.
I think you're kinda just like local, but kinda how I envision it, like having local topics for conversation, because we should be doing what makes sense for their, your benefit and.
Yeah, well, and it's like, it's the same thing we did with like the early release of that time stamp, like, we were, like when we thought that was winning, we, we, but we wanted to see things improving. But, but, you know, we worked through and there's like, you know, a lot of things are trying, we're trying to learn correction on things. Same thing like this, like, what I'm believing is that the main point is that we want more people in our AP classes and more challenging classes in our CT program. So we should be able to tell that two years from now, are no people taking them or less? If there's less, then why, then what are we actually doing this for? So that would be like the, I was just saying, is it actually adding any consequences or do we just change something to change it?
And that's what the three years will allow us to do, is look at those numbers, it wouldn't have to be wait three years. We can give updates each year to say, hey, because the AP actually gives paid center awards and honor roll awards to schools that if you increase the number of kids taking AP exams, AP classes, those things, like you can meet those parameters. So there's a lot of measurements. I would also say, I would be remiss if I didn't say this, and, and, and when you get to that graduation under this system, because I, I was a principal under the system for six years. It is that graduation day when you call these kids up to get these cords and you say, you know, the following twelve students received cum laude honor, and they put those cords out, go sit down, no one is worried about like G, all it is is you got a bunch of proud families and parents and these kids beaming about all those kids being acknowledged for all that work they put in. Um, it's just, it, it gave me, it used to give me goosebumps, sitting here six years in, like seeing all those kids receive these honors, because I knew the work that went into it. Um, I would tell you right now, I think the board would recognize, I am certainly a person willing to recognize mistakes when they're made and I will acknowledge like, hey, this isn't, and we will do that in this situation. If we're looking at data and, and saying like, this just isn't the right thing for Pittsville. Because it's gotta work for us, and I think this committee did a great job of building a document that's specific to Pittsville. This isn't like any of these other laudate systems, they look at, they took those and they put in what would work here. To Julie's question, of course, a great question, we don't wanna do stuff artificial that's gonna encourage kids to not fit classes in our buildings because there's a lot of research that kids who take AP classes from our teachers here are gonna, it's more rigorous and they're gonna be more challenged if they take them online or somewhere else. We want them to take them here in our building and this system you guys came up with just, like, and I wasn't a part of it. Like, but I looked through this, you guys did a great job with this, like covering those bases and making it like Pittsville clan, so I appreciate that.
I want to say to you, um, definitely, you might not think, but it is a big problem, kids avoiding classes, it's too hard. Like as an AP teacher, definitely you hear like, oh, I'm not gonna do that.
Twenty-eight years ago, I dropped out of high school.
Yes, they ordered out after term.
I knew that.
Five out of seven of us did, yeah, because we weren't gonna get an AP.
Yeah.
I mean, that's like, I mean, I, I mean, I.
Don't you think we're running the problems when the, personally of the most points under this system is not considered for valedictorian or valedictorian requires the state?
Almost every year.
Oh, you mean the academic, so Rick, believe it or not, that happened to me in that, that as well, that ten percent off the charge.
It could be way down here.
Yep, and here's what I'm gonna tell you, that changes nothing, like, it would've, it would've been that way likely anyway. We had a student who broke the record for laudate points, and he did not get that scholarship. And his parents called me and said, do we talk about this?
Yeah.
And I sat down and I said, statutorily, this data will count, this was got to require this and how this works. And what I asked is, I said, would, and I mentioned his name, which I will not mention now, would he have taken any different classes knowing that? And they said, well, absolutely not, he would've taken the same class. I said, then it wouldn't have made any, and they were like, fair enough, it stinks. And then I pointed, but yeah, absolutely, Rick, that was a tough conversation, but they, once I explained, it wouldn't have made any difference because he still would've taken those classes anyway and his GPA would've been lower than that person who got a four point oh that took less rigorous courses.
It gives the students a different narrative they can put in their scholarships to say, I mean, it doesn't impact things that there are rules and it's just the way it is, but it does give a different narrative that that student is able to put into scholarships to say, I might only have a three point four, but I have sixty laudate points because I, you know, and, and that would put me actually at the top of my class from the rigor of that perspective. And so it gives them a different narrative.
Yeah, and the scholarship is the favorite school. It's very, it's very, that was the, you know, probably five AP classes, one kind of, you know.
Correct, correct.
Full semesters of the college.
So what do you need, Nora?
Well, we're, we're looking for.
We're proposing for a hybrid, sorry, I'm on this here, it's coming, but. A hybrid for the next three years is fully influenced, well, a hybrid out of the next three years, that's where. And then we'll burn data every year and then hopefully the data shows that we won.
For twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
And then we'll go with the laudate system for the twenty-eight, twenty-nine, ten year.
And it could be determined at that point by the board and the administration and the staff of how that valedal might be recognized at that.
So in a sense, for three years, we're gonna run both.
Yeah.
We're gonna run back tradition.
So I've seen it, like, we've seen it last night, I don't think it really, pretty good for them, I think it comes with points and analysis, right? You're gonna go back on that, right?
Yep.
We're gonna always have to run both, aren't we? To decide the valedictorian. Well, we could pick valedictorian, we could say first.
But, but you could pick, but.
They don't get the scholarship, but they're part of it.
But they are.
They're, they're.
Valedictorian policy change.
The dollars, I think what's confusing is we say the valedictorian not the scholarship. The scholarship and the right scholarship, there's no valedictorian word in it. It is academic has something with another GPA.
Yeah.
Yeah, you and G, they would still have that.
So, all you're asking for us is for us to allow you for the next three years to try this alongside of our current process. And we'll get data each of those three years to determine after that point.
What comes next.
What we're gonna do long-term. And we're sharing with students that we're going to recognize and we're trying to recognize what they do.
So to be clear.
I think that's an ABA.
And I wanna be very clear about fiscal impact. The cost of the cord is effectively the only fiscal impactant of anything. Having kids pick more, having kids take more classes in our building, unless maybe some of the external could actually have a positive impact.
This year we would've saved ten cords, so.
So, oh, really? Uh, but yeah, to that point, I just wanna talk about the fiscal piece, there really would be, and I would envision, and I know the committee, I'm sure has talked, if, if the board approves this tonight, the next step would be doing informational meetings for students and families to answer questions. It's kind of the process we follow, is have a meeting in the evening, record likes a little video to show the people who explain the system to them.
And I also think that if we really are just approving to trial this for the next three years alongside, like, I, I think that also stops them a little bit for people who are like, ooh, but I like, so, well, then let's just try it and see how it is and see what that, and see what the data shows and, so I think that that also helps stop them. I'll make the motion to approve the trial for the next three years.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is second, and now there's a conversation. Yes, my favorite.
I.
I oppose.
Please, please bank the rest here, committee members.
Thank you.
Nora, thank you.
Is this the words, versus?
So you saw Mary Ann's email, um, we are allowed to select, each district is allowed to select one nominee for Worcester. There's only a limited, one is up to five, five for Wasbe. So they're separate, but five for Wasbe, we're limited to one. So, uh, the deadline is end of July for this, which is why we have to make a decision tonight as a board, who we would like, if you, who the one would be for Worcester that we would like to go forward with. And then a list of five, uh, so board members were asked, Mary Ann shared hers, because she couldn't be here, but board members were asked to come tonight with any other local businesses that they may want to add to the list. So I know at least Rick had mentioned, I mean, he had a couple he wanted to, so I guess we would start with, are there any additional ones to the ones that Mary Ann listed that, uh, the board would like to react to that list of those to recognize? And then for Worcester, we would have to, the board would have to make a, come to a consensus on a single, um, business to recognize. Rick, you wanna start with your additional?
I know that, I know Mary Ann put down Gardner Cranberries, Stab and Wheeler's, all three good choices. Um, Jason and I talked today, I, I sent him my thoughts this morning and he thought that was a good one, but Han Transportation was mine. Um, I know they've given tens of thousands of dollars over the years in free stuff. Um, one time I, uh, maybe was a little negligent on ordering a bus, um, for a kayaking trip and all of a sudden I had a bus waiting for me when we got there, uh, recharge to the district. And that's just one example, he, he does this all the time.
Summer library program, they, they transported multiple times back and forth, two different grounds and stuff, and that was all donated.
Yeah.
At, they were on my list also. I have two additional on my list too, and they, I, I have them, but you're on my list also.
Oh, you do, Rick, which is your other one?
I mean, along with what Mary Ann.
Well, the other one was a combination, Jason.
Yeah.
But, uh, the Pittsville record, um, the work that they've done, the work they do for our district, um, just keeping the people informed of what goes on here. And they make it so easy to do, uh, it doesn't take much, just drop it off and it's in.
Cause I wanna clarify something about these awards, if you look through these awards, this is not just a monetized, like when we talk about like, well, they give us free stuff, are they doing that money? It's to do with like building the school, like, like with Han, when you talk about that, outside of the free buses, think of the service that they provide to the district and have for all those, you're, so I just wanna clarify that with everybody that, don't think just in terms of monetary donations, which matters, that helps, right? I think it's in for Pam, we want donations, all of our, other, the soft side of like support, so, okay. Julie, who did you have?
I have Hecrit Talat. Um, and, and just, I, I don't, I don't necessarily know that, um, I just know that they also are very supportive and I don't know the difference necessarily between, um, the recognition of Gardner Cranberries or the Hecrit Talat, and I don't know even from the perspective of like that connection to cranberry science and like, you know, we're that key. But, but Hecrit is also always supportive, um, in so many different things, including, is their names on, um, baseball field. Like, I mean, they're very community oriented, so they're my others, I have Han and Hecrit.
So may I throw a thought out related to your comment on that? And I guess I didn't say that. My understanding is this could go to individuals or businesses. So would I be remiss if I said that, like when we're talking Hecrick and Gardner Cranberries, that if you were looking at maybe Tom Gardner? Like, cause you can recognize individuals.
But I think it's two different gardeners. Two different gardeners.
There are two different.
One, one runs so cranberries, one runs so talat.
Right, they're two different people.
I know Butch and Tom, I know him.
Yeah, yeah. So Butch would be.
We use Butch for the cranberries.
Gardner Cranberries.
Gotcha.
And Tom would be Hecrick. But yeah, we could recommend a person.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, I do. I, I do know him. I think, I know every cross. I know that, but I know Butch and Tom.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to say that if we had trouble like marrying down the list, if we could look at individuals, like if there were certain individuals that maybe were the advocates looking at that way, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Chris and Nate, did you have any?
I'm not on the list. I haven't hit none.
Okay. So, so the easy thing effectively to me would be when you're looking at the Wasby ones, you're allowed five, right? So, okay, right, right now what I see is we have six that have been referenced by one. Is that accurate by Michael? Do you want me to read?
That's right.
Hecrick, Staub, Wheeler, Gardner Cranberries, Han and Pittsville Record. So, um, here's something we could look at if the board wanted to. If, if the board wanted to look at the local aspect, I guess, more. I'm, I'm saying the quiet stuff out loud. Some of these businesses are more local than others. And, and maybe have had a longer standing relationship of support with the district. Like, like if we needed to narrow this list down a little bit.
Oh, like we heard a question if they have some of the people that support them.
Yes.
And I mean, I was saying we used to lean, leaning towards for the first time to do with our local businesses, but.
A little small, maybe.
Or we have, there's one and there's five, so we pick one, five, five.
Good. What do we? Yeah, certainly open, open to discussions amongst the board. This is a board level decision.
Is, is there like a full application that has to get written in?
Rick, actually went through and kind of started filling out for the nomination piece for, uh, I think, right?
Yeah.
I do. What I, Julie, I don't know if this is why you're asking, but if the board were to come up to a consensus or they want, I would begin filling out these applications and soliciting the information, like if they needed like a letter from the board, then I would reach out to you. Chris, can you guys write me a letter to submit with this nomination? So I'll do the legwork on the nomination and get any information required from the board to do so after our decisions made tonight. I would fill it out as the district as a representative of the school board. So mainly we would just need to know who those, the, the five and the one would be.
Can you guys have any thoughts on that? We have six total and we have six nominations, right?
Yeah, I mean, again, um, I'll just put myself out there to say, I need to go into them to like read specifically what each of them are. So I'll call myself out on my homework with four. I don't know if certain ones fit better there. I mean, I think we have six identified and I would just recommend making sure that they fit, right? And I just have to be, I'm calling myself out that I didn't do my homework well enough to make sure that I know which one might fit.
My computer went dead. I was gonna, Jen, could you possibly do a search for, I was wondering if we could just briefly pull up, if you went to Google and did WERSA. I shared this with the board previously, the links to the, when you want to. And, and we could just pull that up and look. So Wasby, uh, was it the business award, Rick?
WERSA is the community partner, one community partner.
Okay, you wanna run?
Wasby's up to five.
So, so maybe just pull that up and would you read the WERSA like community partner? Could you read the description on the link?
Which one was on the link? Which one do you want?
Do WERSA.
Do the one.
Do the one.
Oh, this is the one that I.
Yeah. So what is it list for like the, okay, recipient's name, the business.
This award is for an individual, community member or local business industry ear in the school district who has provided a runway, support and contribution to the world of the district, district employee or student.
See, that's helpful to me.
Yeah.
That's the WERSA.
Yeah, and what's the other one?
Wasby?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Jen, actually I told you, you don't need to do that. I, I have sent an email link to the board members. It's way easier for them to just pull the link up. I'm sorry.
I know, I'm looking. So this one is invite members to board to submit names of the five local businesses, including newspapers or other media that have been helpful to your school district over the past year. Tell us why they, what they've done. And so in looking at these two, my recommendation would be Han Transportation for the one and the other five businesses for this one.
Totally. Yep.
And sorry, I didn't do my homework.
No, this was our homework. It was a plus.
I have a screenshot.
Yeah. That would be my suggestion.
So I. I think probably it would hurt to have a, a motion and then I'll proceed with putting the applications together.
I will send you what I wrote up.
Sounds good. So can we do a? We had it under action items, so.
I'll make a motion to, um, suggest an application for WRFA for Han Transportation and WASB for the Pittsville Record, Gardner Cranberries, Wheeler's, Staub and Hecrick Talat.
Yes. Second.
Motion to second. Any other conversations? If not, I'm third.
Aye.
Post. Okay, motion passes. Aye, over to you, please.
So I'll, I'll jump in before Taylor goes in just to briefly explain. So in the setup of the, the CTE area for the auto lab, we received countless donations, which Taylor will go over with you. One of the investments we're gonna have to make structurally, one of the few investments, is we need to add a second overhead door to put three lifts in. So lifts are being procured and through donations. And, and some of the monetary donations and both lift donations, but we need to have a second door so that you can drive in and access all three lifts. So this needs to happen before this stuff can get put in. So we're, we're gonna have to get that done. And then potentially as these other donations come in, it can be offset. But right now we need to get the door put in because we gotta have to get it on a schedule. So we just went through the three bits and the five. So, um, it's at the, correct, that building and, and we'll go on a tour here in the next, maybe the next month at the board meeting as it gets a little further as far as cleaning it up. The cleaning has been emptied, cleaned, um.
Is there anyone over there?
The auto. Yes. Yeah, cause there wasn't space in just this, the angler.
Going from one lift.
Yeah. So, so that is gonna be utilized to get in the auto. That will be the auto lab. Yeah, it's gonna be fully functional with minimal upgrades.
So are you saying, okay, right, I don't have one question.
Yes.
Anybody know what this is? But it's just in the budget or are you saying it's out of the budget? We're making the expense and then we're trying to go find money or where are we finding the money?
It would be Fund Forty-Six, capital improvements. We have that Fund Forty-Six. But the idea would be asking to have donations come in.
Cause I didn't know about it.
But nothing in our capital budget would be in our budget.
Right, unless you had a science project.
So there was no spending out of Forty-Six. Okay, this would get spent out of Forty-Six and maybe we would get other donations that could replenish it. Maybe not, but it would come out of Forty-Six.
Taylor, can you just briefly, yes, Julie, Taylor, can you just mention some of the donations we received? But some of them that specifically requested like, so a group donated eight thousand dollars. They said, we wanted to go to equipment in the lab. So Taylor, you would just go for that.
Yeah, so the Mike Rock Memorial donation, that was eight thousand dollars. That construction donated five thousand dollars last year for the auto program. So now we need to spend that, so we're gonna be sending that on equipment and tools. Our Y eight stylened will be just over thirty-two hundred. Our old tech equipment resale, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. And then Carl Perkins within two thousand and fifty-six dollars. They're also looking at where they can, like recently, we just got a five thousand dollar donation from both quarters. They're going in for post post lift. That's the recent one that we got. Troy's been doing a really good job of connecting with other community centers as well. There's still stuff in work with other partnerships.
And to be clear, those are just the monetary donations. There's been equipment donations, like you talked about the four post lift or equipment.
Yeah.
I just want you to know the monetary donations to the auto program so far. So, and that's, it's been, Troy is doing a really nice job of beating the bushes, looking for pennies and whatnot from folks and stuff. So the main thing with the door is it needs to go in now before we can set up these lifts. So right now.
It's been three weeks. I mean, there's three weeks left for ordering the doors. So sooner we can get those doors ordered and ready to go. I talked to Mitch and Leonard at Merewood. He's been great to work with and he's excited to lock out by mid-August.
So that's it, then, actually. I'll make a motion to approve the CTE door bid for Merewood Construction.
I'll second. Motion to approve. Is there a motion on the second? Is there any other conversations? Paul, favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed. Motion passes. Okay. I don't know how many, I'm glad kids were covered that earlier. Second call for further comments.
Can we though make sure that we put together Cat Leonard for Tiffany and Johnson and Baldwin?
I have to be on it with thousands of us until tomorrow morning.
And then also share it with us because I think that the second piece is we can send it in the board. I would encourage all board members to hopefully make personal calls or send it through.
So what my plan would be, I'll make it as a Google draft and I would like input from the board. I'll, I'll put the beat together and then it would be.
I just think that people need to know the impact. And when we have so many families using it, I, decisions still have to get made. I respect decisions that people have to make, but they should know the impact. And I think we have an obligation to share that.
I think I'm going to judge it on, I'd ask if some of those parents were ready to testify or whether they want to be included with that from some of the parent perspective, so.
Well, what we can share with the parents, this is the letter the board's sending because they are also people to vote. And the more phone calls that come, it really, really matters.
I'm pretty sure feature agenda items. All corporate contracts, sixty-six point oh three deals.
Those are agreements where you're either sharing, like we send a student somewhere, but we don't have a program to, or if any agreement, we'll move to for sharing costs for either a staff member. That's just the same thing that I, actually Jen and I talked about that, that on there, we don't have any pending right now. That Pam, can you, we don't have any sixty-six oh three agreements right now.
Not that I'm aware of.
So it's, it's more or less on there to remind us that if something comes up, but we don't have it right now.
Security cleaning report to the board. Anyone else's parents?
Yeah.
Social media report, plausible regional meeting, resolution to sign fund balance, fund time reserves. Security officers, I forget, last August, I don't know, twenty, sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six. And staff notifications in September.
Yep.
AM updates from employees September, annual board goals in August. Is there anything else anybody want on there?
So it would be to look at food service.
Food service.
So I sometimes, again, I, I'm not, this is not something like we are asking, I'm not asking to look at this like we're gonna make this effective September first. I am looking at us taking a thorough look at it to make sure that there isn't another alternative out there for us. And so very thoughtfully, think through, yes, so.
Jen, can you just add on that list, um, food service, Pam, food service, RFP?
Right, it has to be RFP. And the problem I ran into when I looked at people who hired that was we have such small enrollment, we would have to be tapped on to a bigger school district. So then they would, otherwise if we didn't like partner with another school district, we weren't big enough to do it on our own. That could have changed. That was one of the pitfalls.
Yeah, just add it on there. We'll do a little research on that, please. Okay.
Do you recommend that, like the Wasby needs to be updated on the handbook? That can be updated in August?
I think that could be updated in August. I think it's more important to update the belt for families and we'll do some informational tests. Good luck.
And I think especially because you're gonna be introducing it as, we're adding this and it's going alongside of what already exists, right? So I think that it gives you some clarity.
There will be a couple of policy changes to the August, I mean, yeah. Or for Jen, one of them being for, um, inferring evaluations that are done outside the district and the partners or how that was. WASB came out with some new ones, I'm just rather old, about doing that and that's a double leaning policy. So that's.
Did we have a date, Chris, to push nervous straight on or?
No, maybe if you're looking.
Well, we'll come back with, uh, I'm trying to remember if that needs to be done before September. We'll come back with that.
Okay. Let's get all the other ones together. I have no other. Okay, all better?
Okay, the board, we left a lot of time in the last round.